Test, test, one, two, one, two. Test, test, one, two. Test, test, one, two, three, four. Test, test, one, two, three, four. Test, test, one, two, three, four. Test, test, one, two, three, four.
Okay, council members, it is 5:30. So we'll go ahead and start our closed session meeting. This is Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022. I'll call the closed session to order. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak on our closed session items? Anyone who is on virtually or in the room?
Give us just a moment.
All right. If you are watching virtually and you'd like to speak on closed session item, you can raise your hand and our team IT folks will put you through.
Sorry, just one more moment. No comments.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and reach us to closed session now.
Okay, council members and folks in the audience, I think we're going to go ahead and get started. It is 6:01 and I'm going to go ahead and call our city council meeting to order. This is Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022. The council members are socially distanced and we have plexiglass between us. And so council members, if you're comfortable with removing your mask, feel free to do so. And with that, we did just come out of closed session and I'll ask our city attorney, do we have anything to report out, sir?
No, Mayor, there's no reportable action tonight.
Thank you so much. And Madam Clerk, if you would be so kind as to call our role.
Councilmember Carwin.
Here.
Councilmember Lees Meyer. Councilmember Sobek.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dynas.
Here.
And Mayor Zimmerman.
I'm here, thank you. We're now on words of inspiration. And Madam Clerk, do you expect Pastor Mike Johnson from Impact to be able to make it tonight?
No, he's not joined on Zoom at the moment.
Okay, so fortunately for us, we happen to have Linda Blanch here with us. She's with Faith Lutheran Church. She's also one of our senior advisory committee members and an excellent community volunteer. So Linda, if you don't mind, and maybe we can help you with lowering the podium over there. There's a button just down there. You got it. And thank you for being willing to give us words of inspiration. Then we'll also have you lead our flags lute as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks. We thank you for this day and for all the blessings that you bestow upon us. We also ask that you continue to bless the city council, this meeting tonight, our all city workers, our police department, and the city, all the residents of this city. We just ask that you continue to bless our country and somehow help us to get out of this pandemic stage that we're in. So this, we ask this all in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. If everyone will please stand.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Linda. We appreciate you being here tonight. We are on item 5.1 now. This is redistricting process and it is 6:05 and I believe that's about the time we are hoping to be able to start this program. And I know that we have Mr. Westfall from Bear Demographics here, so you can go ahead and get started anytime you like, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to see you again this evening. Tonight, what we have for you is a presentation on two draft maps. So I'm going to walk you through each one of those maps. And so when that line was drawn 10 years ago, there obviously was no population there, kind of in the Audi Ranch area now. Even during the census, there's no population there. And so, so that's why that boundary is currently there and we fixed that a little bit. In that area over there, kind of north of that area, I think it's off of La Ladera Road, there are some homes that kind of back up against the mountains, just north of there. And so, so we tried to keep that area in council district one and then tried to follow a boundary that we could use. And I'll go through the boundaries and council district one here in a second. But we, there are, there are a way to clean that up along the parcel lines if the council and the mayor choose to do so. Once again, there's really no population there, even though that new boundary that we're using is Audi Ranch Road. And so with that, this is the new council district one under draft map number one. And each one of these maps, I'll go through the boundaries. I'll start up at the northwestern edge and just go around in a clockwise fashion. And so, starting at the intersection of, of, or Eathnak Road up there, that's coming along all the northern edge up there is the northern city boundary between Menifee and the city of Paris. And then if you start there at McLaughlin Road and the 215 freeway, you come south along the 215 freeway to the Salt Creek Flood Control Channel. And then you would continue west along the Salt Creek Flood Control Channel to Bradley Road. You come south down Bradley Road to Newport Road and then go west along Newport Road to Berea Road. Make a quick northern jaunt up Berea Road to Normandy Road and then out west along Normandy Road to Audi Murphy Road. And then continuing north along Audi Murphy Road to that mountain ridge line that I just described. And that continues all the way back up to the northern city boundary there. The deviation for council district one under this draft map is negative 0.8%. Next up, we have council district two. And this is what the current council district looks like. I would want to point out that we did receive some comments, written comments, to keep Quail Valley in council district two. And so both of the draft maps do that. Once again, here are the changes to council district two. And so once again, the areas in pink or red are the areas that are being removed and the areas that are in blue would be the areas that would be added. And so this is our new council district two under draft map number one. Once again, if you start up in the northwest corner, that's all the city boundary up there until you get to that mountain ridge line that we've been talking about. And then you come south along the mountain ridge line, back down to Audi Murphy Road again. Audi Murphy Road going south there, all the way to Normandy Road and then Normandy Road going east, excuse me, going east along Normandy Road to Berea Road, continuing south along Berea Road to Newport Road and then continuing east along Newport Road to Bradley Road, continuing north along Bradley Road to the Salt Creek Flood Control Channel and then continuing east along the flood control channel to the 215 freeway. The eastern boundary there is the 215 freeway, all the way down to Keller Road, which is where the city boundaries pick up again. And then it's all of the southern and eastern boundary is the city boundary of the city of Menifee. The deviation for council district two under draft map number one is negative 1.1%. Next up, we have council district three. And this is what council district three currently looks like. And then here are the changes to council district three. Areas in red being removed and the areas in blue being added. I will say that as we looked at these maps and tried to draw these maps, as I'd mentioned earlier in our discussions, I was looking to keep the golf course whole in a district. Unfortunately, that inadvertently split the Oasis community along Alder Gate Drive. And so as we go through this, I'll explain, explain a little bit about how that, how we can fix that. There are about 1,500 people in the Oasis community that live south of Alder Gate Drive and about 1,000 people that live north of Alder Gate Drive. It'll be easier when we get to the council district format to explain how you might change those things. But I wanted to address that as well, because I know we got a lot of comments today.
Good question about this, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
So just without seeing, obviously, head counts or rooftops or anything like that, the, the loss from the east side compared to the gain on the west side seemed to be pretty proportional. Why even, why even change it?
Well, I think it, it seemed, it seemed to make sense to use the clean boundary of the freeway between the four districts. And so you had council district one and two that are on the west side of the freeway and council districts three and four on the east side of the freeway. There is, is no rhyme or reason. And certainly, this is something that could be fixed and you could come back to Han Road, you know, if you wanted to in council district three. But as we were doing this, really, the, there's about equal population on either side of the freeway. And so that's how we built the draft maps, council member.
So on that as well, I was, the 215 compared to the middle of Han, what I gathered, what they were, what was trying to be done in the red, in districting, making the map as, as what it was, is that on the east side of Han, there, there's no voting. Is there anyone in, in that, along Han, between Newport and Scott? It just gives district three some retail and commercial.
Yeah, I don't believe there's any population there. There might be some in the very southern edge that I'm not aware of, but certainly in that, kind of in that whole northern stretch where you have all the commercial development, there's no population, there's no residential population.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
But once again, certainly if the council instructs me to, to change that, we can be happy to change that back.
I was just think, you'll let us know how many are in the census blocks? Because I, I don't believe there's anyone along the east side of, of Han, unless there's one down by Louis Nursery. I have no idea.
Well, there's always a potential for a homeless population count too, but, but that doesn't mean that there's residences there, council member.
Thank you.
So here's our draft map number one for council district three. So if we start at the intersection there of Antelope Road and Alder Gate Drive, continuing east along Alder Gate Drive to Menifee Road, which once again splits the Oasis community in half. And then we continue north along Menifee Road to Trailhead Drive, east along Trailhead Drive to Lindenberger Road and then continuing south along Lindenberger Road to Dominigony Parkway. And then you go south, or I guess it's southwest along Dominigony Parkway there, to Laguna Vista Drive and then continuing south along Lunegis Laguna Vista Drive to Rockport Road, continuing east along Rockport Road to the city boundary. And then the western edge and the southern edge there is all the city boundary and then coming back up north along the 215 freeway to the point of beginning. The deviation for council district three is 0.8%. The other thing I would point out with this particular map is that in order to capture all of the population that's around the golf course there, there's kind of that strange, strange thing that comes south of Newport Road there on the eastern, northeastern edge of that district. The, because of the way that the roads have been reoriented along Lindenberger and Dominigony Parkway, Lindenberger doesn't go through all, through there all the way anymore. And so the only way to do it in a way that meets the legal criteria is why you have to go over to Laguna Vista and then come back, back up Rockport. It seemed to make some sense. There's, you know, all of those communities along Rockport are gated communities. And so there's some gated communities on the north and different gated communities on the, on the south of Rockport, along with a Waus right there. And so it seemed to make sense, but it's a little, little strange and I did want to point that out as well. It isn't the most ideal way to do it, but it does keep the, all of the residences around the golf course in one district. Then lastly, for draft map number one, we have council district four. Then the changes to council district four. The area in red there in the southern end that's around the golf course, that's the Oasis community. There between Antelope and Menifee, kind of on both sides of Alder Gate there. The, and so one way that we could solve that issue is to put that area back into council district four. The other way to do it and could really only be done in this draft map with that kind of strange addition to council district four on the southeast there is that if you include all of the population north of Alder Gate Drive, so all of the Oasis community into council district three, it gets a little strange. And what I mean by that is it's based on the census geography. And so the census geography actually cuts in the middle of the mountain, would include the far west water tower that's there up in the hills. And basically, all of the population that's along Antelope Road as it turns into Tully Road there, right as it kind of turns into Tully Road, all of that would also be added to council district three. And so if you look at, if you just look at the map and you look north of Alder Gate Drive up along the 215 freeway, that would all have to go into council district three for the Oasis community to be whole in council district three. The easier way, once again, is just to add it back into council district four. But those are the, really the two options that the council has. And here's our draft map of council district four and a draft map number one. Once again, up at the north there, it's the city boundary. And then coming down on the eastern edge, all the way down until you get to Rockport Road is also the city boundary. And then from there, we continue west along Rockport Road to Laguna Vista Drive, continue north along Laguna Vista Drive to Dominigony Parkway, continuing north along Dominigony Parkway to Lindenberger Road, continuing north along Lindenberger Road to Trailhead Drive and then continuing west along Trailhead Drive to Marietta Road, then continuing south along Marietta Road to Alder Gate Drive and then continuing west along Alder Gate Drive to Antelope Road and then continuing, continuing south along.
Excuse me, you said Marietta Road?
Yeah, do you mean Menifee?
I hope you mean Menifee.
Yes, sir.
We've just really changed our districts.
So that's a, that's a typo in my notes. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, I appreciate that. So yes, Menifee Road. And then, let's see, so continuing south along Menifee Road to Alder Gate Drive and then Alder Gate Drive there back over to, to Antelope Drive. There's also, you know, in this, in this configuration, this is something that'll get fixed if we keep the Oasis community whole. The boundary actually comes down Alder Gate Drive to the Salt Creek Channel. And so there's kind of this little, kind of little piece that hangs out there just along the 215 freeway. Once again, it's a beneficiary of the census geography. But what you do there is you come down Antelope Drive to the Salt Creek Channel and then Salt Creek Channel, just jumping over to the 215 freeway, going up to 215 freeway north, once again, all the way up to the city boundaries that are up there. And under this draft map, council district four for draft map number one has a deviation of 1.1%. The overall deviation for this draft map is 2.2%. And just get a look at what it looks like overall. And then just aerial version of the same map. And these are the statistics, the top line statistics for the map based on the 2020 census. In the report we provided to staff and that's available on the website and in your agenda packet, there's more detailed statistics as well as we provided initially on in this process. But for this purpose, we just wanted to show the top lines. And once again, that overall deviation that we need to keep under 10% and this map is 2.2%. So with that, we'll move on to draft map number two. Once again, we'll start at council district one and this is our current council district one. Changes again are in blue, are being added and the areas in pink or red are being removed. And this is council district one under draft map number two. And so once again, we start up at the northern city boundary there until we get to down to McLaughlin Road and the 215 freeway, coming south along the 215 freeway to Newport Road and then continuing west along Newport Road to Marietta Road. I got that right, I believe. I'm on the right side of the city here. And then continuing north along Marietta Road to the Salt Creek Flood Control Channel, continuing south along the Salt Creek Flood Control Channel to Normandy Road and then continuing west along Normandy Road to Audi Murphy Road, continuing north along Audi Murphy Road to that mountain ridge line and then continuing north along that mountain ridge line back up to the city boundary. The deviation for council district one under draft map number two is 0.7%. Now we have council district two and this is our current council district two. And here are changes to council district two. Areas in blue being added and the area in red being removed. And this is our draft map council district two, draft map two's council district two. And so once again, if we start up there along the city boundaries until we get to that mountain ridge line and then coming south along the mountain ridge line to Audi Murphy Road, continuing south along Audi Murphy Road to Normandy Road, continuing east along Normandy Road to Berea Road and continuing south along Berea Road, oh, excuse me, I'm reading the wrong description here. So let's start over. Continuing south along that mountain ridge line to Audi Murphy Road and then continuing south along Audi Murphy Road to Normandy Road, continuing east along Normandy Road to Marietta Road and then continuing south along Marietta Road to Newport Road, continuing east along Newport Road to the 215 freeway and then going south along the 215 freeway down to the city boundary at Keller Road and then once again, along the southern and western edges of the district are all the city boundary. The draft map or the deviation for council district two under draft map number two is negative 2.6%. Next, we have council district three. And these are the changes to council district three. The areas in pink or red being removed and the areas in blue being added. And this is council district three under draft map number two. And so once again, starting at Antelope or Antelope Road and Alder Gate Drive, continuing east along Alder Gate Drive to Menifee Road, continuing north along Menifee Road to the, what is a parcel line? That's not an actual street there. There's a parcel line that's just north of Celestial Drive there. And that's the current boundary for council district three. And we maintain that boundary in this draft map. So continuing east along the parcel line north of Celestial Drive to Lindenberger Road, continuing south along Lindenberger Road to Dominigony Parkway, continuing east along Dominigony Parkway to the city boundary. And then the, the eastern and southern edges there is all the city boundary. And then picking back up at the 215 freeway and the 215 freeway coming all the way north, once again, to that, to the Salt Creek Channel and then going east, east along the Salt Creek Channel over to Antelope Road and then back up Antelope Road to the point of beginning. The deviation for council district three under draft map number two is 3.6%. And then last up, we have council district four. And the last up, we have Council District Four. So this is our current district. These are the changes, areas in red being removed and the areas in blue being added. And this is Council District Four under draft map number two. And so once again, up at the northern city boundary, entire northern edges, the city boundary. Coming along the city boundary on the east, all the way down to Dominigony Parkway. And then continuing west along Dominigony Parkway to Lindenberg Road. Continuing north along Lindenberg Road to that parcel line north of Celestial Drive I just described. Continuing west along that parcel line north of Celestial Drive to. I think I have the wrong notes in here too. I think to Menifee Road, right? Yeah, Menifee Road. And then continuing south along Menifee Road to Aldergate Drive. Continuing west along Aldergate Drive to Antelope Road. Continuing south along Antelope Road, once again, to Salt Creek there. And then continuing west along Salt Creek to the 215 freeway. And then coming back up to 215 freeway to McLaughlin Road and then the city boundary there north of McLaughlin Road. The deviation for Council District Four under draft map number two is negative 1.7%. And the overall deviation for draft map number two is 6.2%. So here we have overview of draft map number two. And once again, an aerial version of the same map. And here are top line statistics for draft map number two. And as I just mentioned, it has a overall deviation of 6.2%. The next slide here just shows all three of the maps next to each other. So you can compare and contrast. Now I'd like to take you through the two maps that were submitted by the public. I won't go into much detail on them. I don't know the motives or the, or the explanations of why they drew the maps that they did, but I did want to show them both to you. The first map that we have submitted by a member of the public was submitted by Don Slater. I did want to personally apologize to Mr. Slater. When we originally produced this map for the city, when we transferred the information from the online mapping tool to our software. We inadvertently missed two census blocks between District Three and Four. And so. That was brought to our attention this morning and we corrected that. I believe Mr. Slater has been, been notified of that, but I did want to personally apologize to him for that inadvertent error. This map has an overall deviation of just over 5%.
Mr. Westall, does Mr. Slater's map also in between District Three and Four? Follow along Aldergate Road and divide the Oasis?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mayor, it does.
Thank you.
It, the other thing I would point out with this map is between Council Districts One and Two, I talked about. Those communities on either side of the ridge line. This map includes some of those communities west of La Ladera Road. Into Council District Two that are up against the mountain there. Seemed to make more sense to me that they belonged in Council District One, but certainly that's the policy decision of this body. With that, I'll show you the second map, and this is a map that was submitted on December 1st by Matthew Gilmore. And Mr. Gilmore's map mayor, it does not split the Oasis community. It is kept whole in Council District Four. But as you, as you can see, he, oh no, excuse me. And there's certainly a much smaller deviation in his map as well. It's 0.5% overall. So just lastly, it's important, not only for this body, but also for the public to understand that this isn't the end of the process. We're really in the middle of it. And so we do have still public hearings coming up in front of the council this month and next month. And so you can go to the city's website at cityofmenifee.us/redistricting to get more information. About those and we'll go over those dates in just a second. There's a public comment form on the website, which we encourage the public to fill out to give us more information. About how they feel about these maps or any other draft maps that we'll produce for the council. You can also access the online mapping tool on that and we'll continue to monitor that site. And if there's more publicly submitted maps that are available, we will be sure to submit them to the city. And then if you want to submit your own comments or your own draft map, you can email the city clerk. And her email address is there at srosine@cityofmenifee.us. In terms of upcoming meetings, we have tonight, which is our draft maps presentation. We'll be back here in two weeks. And so certainly when we get into the discussion part of this item. If the council wants some changes and see some more draft maps, we can come back and present those in a couple of weeks. It's anticipated at this point that the council would adopt the final map and the first reading of the ordinance on March 2nd. And then on March 16th, the second reading of the ordinance would take place. As we previously discussed, the, this process has to be completed by April 17th. So if we feel that we're not ready by March, we certainly have some time to get this right. And then lastly, if you'd like to contact the city, once again, on this process, you have the phone number for the city clerk's office there on the screen. Once again, Stephanie's email there as well as the city's website. So with that, Mayor, that's the end of the presentation. I'm happy to, to answer any questions and take any comments.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Westall. We appreciate it. It's a great presentation. Council members, this is our opportunity to give a little feedback. I know most of you have received emails from. Mainly from the folks in the Oasis neighborhood, but I know there's some in our red folders as well. So we'll start with Councilman Dynas.
Thank you. As Mayor mentioned, that, you know, we've received a number of correspondence from the Oasis. I guess when I first saw this, I was a little disappointed in the whole process, the fact that. Oasis was just divide down the road, not taken into account that they are a community of interest, you are 55 plus community. That in order to save a golf club, the golf course to be in one district, we gave up a community of interest and split it in half. I find that unacceptable. These residents deserve to be in one district and have, have one representative that they, they can go to. And so I would expect that on the next round, the next map we see will have Oasis in one community, in one district as a whole community.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Sobek.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. As, as Mayor Protem Dyna said, I did count, there's a total of 15. Submittals from the Oasis neighborhood. And every single one of them have asked they stay whole. So that would be my request is that we look at that boundary line to be able to leave that neighborhood together. They are a very active neighborhood, very strong HOA gated community as well. So that would be a request. Also, I did mention earlier about the district line for District Three. That if possible, if it could move back over to Han, just so that there's some retail and commercial in District Three. If it can go, just go straight down Han, if that would be doable. So, and then those lines up between District Three and Four are very confusing. If somehow we can see those on a better map to make sure we're not splitting neighborhoods. Cause I believe celestial, the street celestial. I'm not sure if it's the last street in that neighborhood. Or if there's an adjacent neighborhood. So it's just very confusing in that area. So if we could see. I don't know, a better map, that would be a request that I have, but thank you for your work. I also want to thank the residents who sent in maps. And all of the residents who sent in comments tonight. Thank you.
No, thank you, Councilmember. What I would just say with respect to those boundaries, I think we can accommodate those particular changes. That, that parcel line that's just north of Celestial Drive, at least visually, you know, and I drove it at least once. It seemed like Trailhead Drive was a better boundary up there. I don't know if you would agree or disagree with that, but I just wanted to throw that out for your consideration.
Excuse me, I'll look at the map and look at Trailhead. I think Trailhead is the one that winds. And leaves separates neighborhoods, correct?
Trailhead comes, I guess the best place to look at it, let's see here. If you look at Council District Three Draft Map Number One, the most northern boundary there. Between, between Menifee Road and Lindenberger is Trailhead Drive. And so that was just on the north head there is really the first road that goes through, through that community to Lindenberger.
Okay. I don't see the map right now. I'm trying to find it. Can you show it on the screen?
Let's see.
Okay, that'd be great. Kind of find it through the packet.
Sure. Yes, let's go to draft map number one. Here we go. So once again, that, that most northern boundary of Council District Three in this draft map. Is Trailhead Drive, and that's the first road that goes through between Menifee Road and Lindenberger.
And then, well, then on this map. You've got District Four that crosses over Newport. So Tierra Shores and Rockport. They're in District Three right now. It seems like more of a natural boundary would be Dominigony Parkway.
Yeah, when we, when we fix the Oasis community issue. Which once again, it's, it's much easier to fix by putting back into Council District Three. It's about 1,500 people.
Back into four.
Go back into four, excuse me. And so when we, when you take that area and you put those 1,500 people back into four. You come much, you come up to Dominigony and maybe even more higher on that, on that eastern edge there. It'll look a lot cleaner.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Next up is Councilman Leesmeyer.
Thanks. Yeah. Great presentation. I would concur with their comments about the, about the Oasis. That's, you know, it's kind of a natural thing. You know, as far as keeping communities together, HOAs, I mean, things like that. I'm kind of ambivalent on the Han Road thing. I don't know what the point of that would be. It's not like we get. Different amounts of money to spend in the districts and things like that. So I don't know what the retail matters, but as far as keeping boundaries together. If you could maybe look at on Audi Murphy Ranch, you're kind of taking a little bit of a corner off Audi Murphy Ranch. That's one neighborhood. If the boundary line for north and south could be like right on the backside of La Ladera Park. You could take that north and then get all of Audi Murphy in one district and everything outside of Audi Murphy in the other district without kind of cutting into the neighborhood and. Tearing out a chunk of it. I think that would probably go a little bit with those residents over there.
I think that's a great comment, Councilmember. Once again, it's the census geography that we're utilizing. But in this particular case, because when the census was taken, there was no population in that area. I mean, even if you look at the, the aerial maps, you can still see the grading that's being done, even though it's, you know, it's very populated over there today. And so what I would suggest is that we overlap the parcel map of the city. And then basically draw a line in that area where there is no population along the parcel line, which I think will get you exactly what you're looking for. And I think that's an easy fix and makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, cool.
And Councilman Carwin.
Thank you. I had the benefit of attending one of the, the community meetings at the Sun City Library. I think it was the very first one. Which was the one that was canceled? Which district meeting?
That was District Two that was supposed to take place at the senior center.
Thank you. So, yeah, I think you're getting a unanimous tone here that splitting the Oasis HOA is not gonna be. Appreciated by anybody. So, you know, we can work that. And then as far as, I concur with. Councilman Leesmeyer's comments that making the park that boundary just makes a whole lot of sense over there when you consider that on the other side is a school. School doesn't vote. So, you know, making the park, the boundary just kind of makes a lot of sense with regard to. I don't know if it makes a difference in the grand scheme of things comparing draft map one and two for District One. I think the, the version of District One in draft map number two makes more sense. Leaving the Bradley Road to the freeway. If the concept is we want to try to make it freeway and Newport as the natural boundaries. Then extending that there and leaving that section by Spirit Park in District Two. That would seem to be the least disruption in the current districting. And it, I would imagine those are fairly similar populations. I don't know how much of a disruption that would be to the numbers, but. My preference would to see, see that park down to Berea and that neighborhood remain in District Two. And keep the Bradley to the freeway in District One if it's possible. The boundary of District Three going across the freeway seems kind of symbolic. Because it's EDC. So whether it goes across the freeway or not, there's really not going to be any houses over there, no matter where you put it. I mean, you know, it's just geography at this point and there never will be any houses there as far as we can see into the near future. So. You know, whether it goes across or not, I think since it's not going to make a difference on population, leaving it at the freeway makes it a lot cleaner for me. You know, if it was a difference, if there was residents there, that'd be a big problem, but since it's going to be all. Commercial, you know, they're not going to see votes there. So that would be my, that would be my take on it.
And, and I want to just kind of chime in real quick and just say, I agree with the idea of trying to hold those lines of the freeway and then Newport Road. As much as we can, just to help curtail some confusion out there. It's easy for people to understand that geographically and know what district they're in. And so if there's things that are. Like the Tierra Shores, I agree with you. Tierra Shores probably belongs in District Three, even though you're proposing to move it. So maybe Tierra Shores, I'm hopeful that that Tierra Shores neighborhood balances census track wide with the northern part of Aldergate Oasis. And just do a swap right there. And, and we end up kind of going back to what we originally had anyway. It was one of my questions and I think Councilman Leesmeyer was asking, what if we stayed with the same map pretty much? I mean, sometimes we might make changes just to make changes, whether or not they're needed. So I did have a question for you. And can you put a boundary line or adjustment? Through a census tract or do you have to stay in census tracts and that's a solid thing? In other words, can you, can you divide a census tract with this exercise?
So the answer in short is yes, but we have to be careful about where we do it. I feel much more, it's much easier to do in an unpopulated area, like we were talking about along Audi Ranch Road just a minute ago. And, and that's because it was unpopulated when the census was taken. And so in that area, you know, or that little Salt Creek jog that we talked about in the draft maps between three and four, those are areas where I feel comfortable. We can draw a line preferably around parcel lines so that the county understands it. But we can draw a line that, that will work. When you're dealing with a populated area, you have to be very careful. About how it may affect the deviations in that census block and how you distribute that population. I'm not, it's, it's not that we haven't done it before, but there's always caution when you're dealing with actual population.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. I know there's other commenters, but I just want to kind of sum up my comments. Let's try to hold that freeway and Newport Road the best we can. And, and again, I'm, I agree with everybody on the Oasis thing. So next up is Matt Leesmeyer.
Sorry. Yeah, I actually meant to withdraw that. I was just going to voice support for the Newport Road to your shores trade off. So.
Perfect. Councilmember Sobek.
Yeah. So I'd just like to, my colleagues, I'd just like to ask you if you would consider leaving the boundary at Han down the middle. You know, over the last, since 2015, I've, you know, built relationships with some of those property owners. And I did talk to one of them today and that would be Victor from Louis Nursery and he was hoping that. And that would be Victor from Louis Nursery, and he was hoping that I could be able to stay as his council representative. I only have three more years, but I have built a relationship. And as we've said, there's not going to be any census in that area for voters, but it is a relationship that I have built with some of those property owners. So that would be my request for you.
All right, duly noted. Any other comments, council members?
Mayor, if I can ask a question of Councilmember Leesmeyer. Councilmember Leesmeyer, I don't know if you concurred in Councilmember Carwin's comments with respect to the, the boundaries between, in draft map number two, that the boundary between Council District One and Council District Two, if, because if you're comfortable with that, that would simplify the, the issues that we have to deal with, and we can kind of stick with that boundary that we just described earlier. And then deal with these other issues that we've been talking about this evening. Thank you, sir.
All right, hearing no other comments, I think we know what your work is cut out for you, and we look forward to you coming back in a couple of weeks and seeing the changes and based on these comments as well as from the public. So thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you giving a great presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
All right, thank you. All right, council members, we're going to move on now. We are also in Presentations five point two, and we are getting our Fire Department Quarterly Update. And I think Chief Lonnie Olson is here tonight. Welcome, Mr. Olson, chief.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight is your quarterly Fire Department update for October, November, and December. Also, I'll cover some twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one year-end stats, and then at the end of it, I'll go over the Canyon Lake Auto Aid Agreement. Can you move it to the next slide, please? So here are the, the stats for that three-month period in time. As you can see at the bottom right-hand quarter there, in total, in the city of Menifee, there was three thousand two hundred and seventy-two calls. Of that, our fire station five ran two hundred and thirty-six, station seven ran seventeen hundred and thirty-eight, station sixty-eight had two hundred and eighty-nine, and station seventy-six had eight hundred and forty-three. Next slide, please. Here goes over our performance measure. We're shooting to try and keep under a five-minute average in our response times. So you can see there when we look exclusively at our code three calls, which is the top line, we're well underneath the average, averaging about four point six minutes to get to the call, and we arrived on scene in less than five minutes to just over seventy-two percent of the calls. When we lump all of our calls in together for that period of time, our timeframe jumps up a little bit. That includes code two and code three calls, and it goes up, and we still manage to stay under the five-minute mark. And just over sixty-six percent of the calls, we still arrived on scene in under five minutes. Next slide, please. This is that five thousand-foot view to kind of show you where all the incident activities happen within the city. The blue shows our medical calls, and then the red are, are fire calls. And then there's a bunch of different miscellaneous colors that go in there for hazmat calls and public service. Next slide, please. All right, this is our twenty twenty-one year-end stats. So at the top there, we have twelve thousand four hundred and ninety-eight calls for service within the city for the year. And then the numbers there are actual responses by those pieces of equipment regardless of jurisdiction. So engine five sixteen hundred and six, engine seven was the eighth busiest piece of equipment in the County Fire Department and ran three thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven. Medic Patrol Seven was the fourth busiest unit in the county and ran forty-one hundred and seventy-two calls. Engine sixty-eight ran twenty-one hundred and twenty-one calls. Engine seventy-six thirty-four hundred and five, and Truck Seventy-Six seventeen hundred and nine calls. Next slide, please. Office of our Fire Marshal Stats. So if you look across the lines there, it shows you the, the performance and work that they did for October, November, and December. And then the last line is our year-end totals for the year. So for plan reviews conducted, six hundred and twenty-seven, planning cases and applications was two hundred. And then a number to highlight there is the total inspections done was forty-one hundred and fourteen. That is a thousand inspection increase from the previous year. So they've been staying very busy. And then for our performance standards, we like to try and stay under ten minutes in our turnaround time for our plan review. As you can see, they, they, they came in just under the number, December with COVID and some other staffing challenges. It, our number went up a little bit for, for that month, but we as an average over the year maintained it in under ten business days. And then as we talked about last time, as we've started to fill all of our staffing spots, we still have one spot for our fire safety specialists to fill, but all of our inspector spots are filled. So our inspection turnaround time goal, as you can see there in December, we met the mark of under two business days. And I'm sure we'll start to see that trend get better and better as the months move along with our staff. Next slide, please. So for our public safety tips, just remind everybody as they're trying to keep warm during the winter, please create a three-foot safety zone, kid-free zone around any of your fires or space heaters. Remember, not all fireplaces are designed for wood burning. It seems to be a common one that we get that's starting all of our, our house fires this time of year. If you have that gas inlet that's coming in, most likely your track home is not designed to burn real wood in. The heat that that generates ends up catching the wood behind it and catching the house on fire. And please, everybody needs to be installing carbon monoxide detectors if you don't have them and replacing the batteries annually. Next slide, please. Before I go into the Canyon Lake Agreement, was there any questions with the statistics? All right, so Canyon Lake Auto Agreement, as everyone knows, on January first, Canyon Lake, the city of, decided to form their own fire department. And that took them out of our cooperative fire protection model, and they had to enter into some kind of agreement to share resources back and forth. So that's what this will cover. Next slide, please. So automatic aid agreement, and that's what we've entered into, which is between Canyon Lake Fire Department and Riverside County Fire Department. And what that says is what resources are we going to share, and then what rules do we abide by? One of the main things is that we are willing to share resources. They're going to be like resources. So the same resources that they have, if they're going to staff one engine, we'll be able to give them one engine. And the biggest piece of that is the operating plan, which tells us how we're going to move through those parts. One of the requirements of the Auto Aid Agreement is that Canyon Lake maintains one engine company with three-person staffing and at least one paramedic on duty every day. Next slide, please. So this is the details of that operating plan of the nuts and bolts of it. Automatic apply, aid applies to emergency incidents only. So those code two calls, if the, if the Canyon Lake engine's unavailable to respond to those, we're not going to send resources from the city of Menifee for non-emergency calls and commit those outside the city of Menifee. The parties agree to handle all calls within their jurisdiction before in cooperative fire, fire protection. If one of the city of Menifee engines was closer, it would respond into the city of Canyon Lake's jurisdiction now. If their engine is available, it will handle all calls within the city of Canyon Lake. And they agree to provide us one engine up to second resource. So say there's a structure fire in Quail, Quail Valley, and they are within either the first or second engine that suggests on our time stamp and our, when we dispatch, they would come out and assist us. And then in reverse, we offer them one engine. Typically, that'll be our Quail Valley number five, or it will be Lake Elsinore's Station Ninety-four. Be the two closest that'll typically run those responds. Next slide, please. So outside of automatic aid, we agree to change one engine for one engine when available. And outside of that, they now have gone outside of cooperative fire protection, which means they don't get all of those closest resources. They now have to request mutual aid. So the way that that works is it's not automatic upon response. With the automatic aid, dispatcher knows she can send one engine. She doesn't have any questions. She pushes the button. She sends the, the engine efficiently. That goes back and forth between us. With mutual aid, there's more of a conversation that happens at an officer level. So Canyon Lake would determine that their incident requires more than two fire engines, the one that they have, and then ours automatic aid. They request mutual aid, and then that's spread out greater throughout the county. So we will probably send another engine, but as it stays there on the bottom line, we are also going to continue to protect the interests of the, the surrounding communities that have maintained cooperative fire protection and maintain first alarm assignments within that first alarm. As an example, most structure fires on a first alarm would be six engines. So we'll keep six engines close, and we'll look outside of that to send mutual aid resources to assist Canyon Lake. And the mutual aid requires duty officer, which is our twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four, seven staff fire captain in the, in the command center and our dispatch center. So they would turn when the mutual aid request came, he would make the decision if, depending on how complex it was, he could also call one of the chief officers to assist him in making that decision. Next slide, please. So response statistic, what does that all come down to, and how has it affected our responses in and out of Canyon Lake? So for January, they didn't run any calls outside of Canyon Lake. And if we look at twenty twenty-one, there was a total of two hundred and eighteen times we send a resource into Canyon Lake to assist from the city of Menifee, averaging about eighteen times per month. With this new automatic aid agreement, that's only happened seven times for the month of January. Obviously, a very small sample size, but we'll continue to monitor that throughout the year. Next slide, please. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
All right, Chief Olson, thank you so much for that presentation. I see Councilman Carwin is on the queue.
Thanks, Chief. I appreciate the presentation. Can, can you tell me just from a administrative standpoint, how long it takes to prepare this?
The, that?
Yeah.
A couple hours. Well, different reports and stuff.
So how much, how much time is your department expending on putting this together? And who does it?
The PowerPoint?
Right.
Me.
You do it yourself?
Yeah, well, with assistance from, from some of the city staff.
Sure. So how much, how much of your time are you spending doing this, this presentation for us?
A couple hours. We have self-generated reports. So most of the information, like if you looked at that second slide, there's, we have some of that set self-generates. We go in and pick out city of Menifee and different parameters that we want. We can look at it by unit responses or a battalion or, or different things that we can go in. And all of that, we have typically set up in like a self-generating system.
Okay, so you're not starting from scratch to learn these, that you're just pulling data from an existing database?
Yes, no, we have, it's called Crystal Reports. It puts all of our CAD data into a system that we can pull some of those statistics.
I just want to make sure we're not giving you like another part-time job reporting to us.
No, 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 no.
Okay, good. Appreciate the, the data. Thank you very much.
Next up is Councilman Leesmeyer.
Thanks, Chief. You know, this, this begs the question. Does it make sense to have this sort of agreement with Marietta to herself?
We do. So that's something that I will look at in the months to come and something I need to go sit down with the Marietta chiefs to discuss. So the piece of property, basic, basically for reciprocal coming in, there is some land south of Keller that is automatic aid into, but I believe the, the city's looking at annexing that into the city of Marietta. That, that portion over there, there's an automatic aid agreement for that. I think I just had, so I've been working with the GIS team here, looking at different response times maps and using some, some some of their abilities to, to look at that on a map and what that looks like, and how can their station five that's down by Loma Linda Hospital assist us, and is there areas that we can assist them? So I'm, I'm looking at that, and there, there is that agreement. We actually have a full auto weight agreement where we assist them up north of Hunter Road and seventy-nine. And, and responses up there also. But that is something that I'm looking at for, for all of their surrounding areas. And I'll go meet with their, their chiefs to discuss. Once I've got all of our information and, and I'm ready to roll.
Great, yeah. The, the, you know, the mayor's neighborhood and some areas down there south of Scott, you know, seventy-six is tied up.
Absolutely.
What do you do? So to see if there's access issues getting across the freeway for sixty-eighth, and you're kind of, you're kind of in limbo, right?
Yep, and that leads us to another good thing that's coming. So something that Marietta's participating in Riverside County Fire Corona. We even have it in, I, I, escapes the name, one of the, one of the casinos in San Bernardino, as well as Ontario and their comm center. We're all doing a CAD-to-CAD dispatch where we'll be able to see each other's resources in live time. So we will be able to send the true closest resource. So if that Marietta engine happens to be exiting off of Scott Road and is the closest to a medical aid there near those intersections, we could, we would be able to see that and send it and be more efficient and share those resources more appropriate. But we are working on that. Yes.
And Councilmember Sobek.
Thank you. Thank you, Lonnie, or Captain, I should say, for your report tonight. I know recently, a lot of the captains went and reported to Riverside County supervisors that it was a dire need that, that they were having on calls and getting ambulances. I know that you had to cut at least one of our fire stations to three drivers or three. Would they be medics or?
We, we removed the short term, we just put it back into play this week, but we had removed the paramedic off of our, our Truck Seventy-Six in order to utilize them on, on frontline fire engines, because with COVID and that staffing shortages, we needed the paramedics.
So are we all back on to regular staffing at all of our fire stations?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It was about a week long.
Yeah, okay, just a week, okay. And I do notice on that map where you show the red dots and the red, the red dots and the blue dots. It used to be kind of in one area and then maybe another area. Now it looks like it's just really spreading out throughout the city. Is that what you're experiencing is just calls just all over the city? That, is there one area that's particularly saturated more than another, like Sun City still?
Yes.
But we are seeing an increase all over the city. That's, I guess, what I should ask.
Yeah, we pulled some interesting data that I have to look at with, with the GIS team, but it significant increase within the, the Sun City area and almost like a, I don't know how to describe it, and I've still got to look at the information to make sure it's true and correct and kind of CQI it. But it looks like that call volume has increased and almost absorbed some of the call volume from around it right now. But it's something that I, I'm not a hundred percent on yet. I need to, I need to go through the data and make sure that it's all correct and work with the team.
Well, thank you for your report. It's very helpful and very educational for us. Thank you.
Wondered, did you want to share something?
I just wanted to point out that the, the map shows a lot of them are paramedic, paramedic calls. But I remind the council that we are going to be introducing a second paramedic unit here in the next fiscal year so that to, to be able to help out with the growth in calls.
Councilman Leesmeyer.
Just a further clarification, like, this is for a quarter, right?
That is a quarter.
Yes, so this is three times what we're. Four times, sorry.
Chief Olson, when you presented a little bit about Canyon Lake, and we certainly want to be good neighbors with them. And I think I remember reading that they have a, a similar agreement with March Air Force Base, and I'm just curious if they also have agreements with Lake Elsinore and some of the other fire providers so that they are covered not just by this agreement with us.
Correct. So they've reached out to the cities of Marietta, Lake Elsinore Cooperative Fire Protection, all under Riverside County, County Fire Department umbrella, right? The same, same as we are. But they did reach out when they, when they came in knowing they were going to need those, and they've gone as far as notifying Riverside City, Idowild. Marietta has been working with them. So yes, they, they've reached out to all of those, and they're participating in the mutual aid system.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, council members, if we have nothing else. Chief Olson, thank you so much for being here tonight. We appreciate all the information.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on. We're on item six now. This is agenda approval or modifications. Madam Clerk, do we have any changes to our agenda tonight?
No changes.
All right, council members, all in favor of agenda approval, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, our agenda is approved. We're now on item seven. This is public comments on non-agendized items. This is the time for members of the public to address the council on items that are not listed on the agenda. The Brown Act limits the council's ability to respond to the comments on non-agendized matters at the time they're made. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes on any item. I'm also going to read this. Anyone who's watching by way of Zoom, you can raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and our information technology staff will unmute you and you can state your name. So at this juncture, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak for you? And also, if this is the time for those members that are watching through Zoom, if they'd like to speak as well?
I don't have anyone signed up in person, and IT is confirmed. We don't have any hands raised at the moment.
Okay, and there is a little bit of a delay, so I'm just going to ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to non-agendized items. This is your opportunity. Seeing none, we can go ahead and move on?
I think so.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we're going to move to council member updates and comments, and I will start on my right, which is Councilman Carwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have three items this week. Number one, the, the mayor and I attended the ribbon cutting for Crumble Cookies in the countryside marketplace. Fantastic to see new businesses coming into town. Nice family that owns that business over there. And just reminder to everybody that just because a place has more than one location, it doesn't make it an evil national corporate chain. We met the family, we met their lovely baby, and it's local people who work there. So yes, local feet are on the ground in a place that has more than one location. So please keep that in mind. I also attended the Sun City Civic Association Health Fair, which was the first one that they had done. In Web Hall, they had vendors there providing all sorts of resources for people. I learned about an organization that does welfare checks on seniors, and it's granted by the state, and it's of no cost. You can sign up for it. They'll come and make. They'll come and make sure you're okay. They'll come and make sure you've got food and those kinds of things and hook you up with resources. They're going to be doing another one in October and then the other side in the other hall, they had a free hot dog lunch. So that was nice for the, for the folks to get out there. Met some wonderful people. And I'd like to see the the vibrance of that community coming back. It was great to see all of the resources out there. And then finally, I wanted to give a shout out to our code enforcement team because there was a, there's been an item that's been lingering for many, many years here in the city, which was the Saddleback Car Wash had two vacant poles. It was a former big pedestal sign with the, you see the two metal poles and they used to have a sign at the top and now it's vacant. It's next to the McDonald's on Bradley Road. And Code Enforcement went out and talked to him about it and the owner was very receptive to it, understood the issue, worked with the city voluntarily and removed those poles under his own dime. And we found out that when we removed the poles, they were full of bees. So there's something else they, that we didn't get to add to the complexity to the project, but those are gone now. So these projects are starting to happen. I just want to commend our code enforcement team for working with somebody in order for them to abate the problem themselves and not taking it on as our problem, but working with them hand in hand. It shows great professionalism. And I want to commend Saddleback Car Wash for working with the city to take down this, this issue that was lingering. So that's what I have.
All right, thank you, Councilman, Councilman Lee Smart.
Nothing to report tonight.
All right, Councilmember Sobek.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a report tonight. The mayor and I attended Liberty High School dedication. And what a beautiful, beautiful addition to this high schools in our area. They had ASB students take us on a tour and I would have thought these ASB students were juniors, but they were freshmen. They did an awesome job and they shared with us that they are the herd and they, and what it means. So it was a great day for the students and the families in our city and a great addition to an education facility, just a beautiful facility. Also, I was invited to attend, oh, there, it went by itself. Can I go back? Okay, thank you. I was invited to attend by the owner of Archibald's and Andy's Car Wash Express. Mr. Shemellus. He made a donation to the Boys and Girls Club from each of those facilities, which really has helped our Boys and Girls Club by making a donation of $10,000. And it was just great to see businesses in our community who, who want to give back to our community. So that was a nice. I was actually late. I got the information. It was at the Boys and Girls Club. So by the time I got there, they did a second presentation. So that was nice of them. I wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Francis Scott Key. He lives in the Palmia neighborhood. And I was notified, invited to come and celebrate with him his ninety-eighth birthday as a World War Two veteran. And so what a sweet gentleman. And right after I was there, our police department showed up to also wish him a happy birthday. So it was, that was a great event to, to meet with some, some of our residents. Just want to let you know, yesterday I did call in along, along with Jonathan Nix to our Riverside County Supervisors. They had an agenda item about approving Valleywide's new districting map. We asked them to put it on hold. They did in January and then it was moved to yesterday. In the meantime, what we found out, what was shared with me, that city staff knew about, Mr. Nick shared with me that there are four neighborhoods, KB Homes, Lennar Homes, Pulte with Talavera Underwood, Remington Neighborhood and Banner Park with eighty new residents that Valleywide taxed them on our city parks. And so we, we asked the supervisors to hold off on approving in case this might be something in another of their area. But they went ahead and they did pass that map. But we were there on behalf of our residents and there are answers that still need answered and some concerns. So want to let you know that. Just want to give a shout out for this Saturday that we are partnering with Waste Management. We have a free bulky item drop-off day at Mount San Yuceno and just let our residents know that. I also attended the Menifee Interfaith Council yesterday. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Councilmember and Mayor Protem Dynas.
Thank you. The only thing I have to report, I did attend the RTA or Director's Meeting. Writership is still down from the pre-pandemic, but with the schools starting to open up now, they did see writership improving. So and they, as things start opening up more, they'll probably re, look at their routes to see what should be either reinstated or increased. That's all I have.
All right, very good. Thank you. Before I give my report, I did want to ask Councilman Carwin. You mentioned that there's a business that you learned of at the health fair that does welfare checks on people funded through the state. And do you have that information? And is that something you could forward on to our senior advisory group? Because they've been asking about that very thing. And so.
Absolutely. I don't have it with me today. I have the business card back in my office. I can forward that for, for distribution, but also if anyone, they're going to be opening up future health fairs to the community at large. They made a last, they, they realized at the last minute that they had the ability to take in all the seniors in the community, but they weren't able to get the word out fast enough. And they're going to be doing more advanced notice next time so that the other communities such as the Oasis can attend and get the benefit. But if anyone wants to contact Norma in the SCCA office, they have that information as well for all of the vendors who are in attendance. But I'll get the name of that organization.
Great, thank you. I know there's been a few reports recently in Sun City where some people have unfortunately passed away and no one knew it and they just passed away in their home. And so that welfare call, if somebody were calling them every day and just checking on them, making sure that they have food or that they're able to be mobile, that would be real bad.
Well, where that came from, where this conversation came up, actually, there is a woman who contacted, who lives in the SCCA and she contacted the board and asked for them to check on her. She was concerned she didn't have any family in the area. And it was that very kind of thing that she was trying to set that up. And that was how they facilitated bringing this organization in. So yeah, it's, it's a valuable asset and a lot of people don't realize that there are grants that cover the cost of these things outside of through Medi-Cal and Medicare and those kinds of things. So it's, it was a nonprofit organization that is funded by grants. So I will definitely get that information for distribution.
I appreciate that. All right. So this is from our last meeting on January nineteenth. And on Thursday, the twentieth, I attended the Neighbor's Business Mixer. It's at the Corporate Room in Wildomar. It's a good marketing event for lots of our local businesses. On Saturday, the twenty-second, as Councilmember Sobek mentioned, Liberty High School had their grand opening ceremony and very impressive campus there. It's very collegiate and I'll tell you, kind of jealous. I wish I could go to school there because it's one of those places that makes you want to go down a career path and work with cohorts and work your way through the high school program. So it's pretty neat. On Monday, the twenty-fourth, I did a tour at MSJC's new stadium and Jonathan Nix joined us as well as our trustee, Vicky Carpenter from the college also attended the tour. It's kind of nice to see that coming along. I think we're going to be very impressed with that in the coming months. That same day, there was a Western Riverside County Projects and Programs Committee meeting. That's a subsidiary of RCTC that I serve on. And then on the twenty-fifth is a Tuesday, there was a chamber ribbon cutting at Crumble Cookies, as Councilman Carwin mentioned. And, and I agree, it's great to have these families taking a risk and starting up new business right here in our community. On Saturday, the twenty-ninth, I attended a special event. This was to honor the Ziders family. It was hosted by the Paris Historical Association at their Train Depot Museum and Mayor Vargas was there as well. We honored a pioneer family, the Ziders family. It was here right at the turn of the century, Walter Ziders. And they've been a staple in this community with many family members that all still live here. So it was a very nice event. On the first of this month, there was a Chamber Wake Up Coffee at a brand new venue. I wanted to share with you guys, you're all familiar with Monteleone Meadows, which is outside of our city. And there's this new venue called Rustic Ranch and it's right on Scott Road, just east of Leon. So it's just slightly outside of our city's boundary. But it's called Rustic Ranch and they do weddings and large events. And so our, they joined Menifee's Chamber of Commerce and we had a wake-up coffee there. There's a lady named Tina Anthony who is doing a great job of making a brand new place for us. So who knows? Maybe we'll be able to have some events there in the future. And that wraps up my report. If anybody else has anything else. Yeah.
I just want to give a shout out to our Menifee Police Department, Captain Carr and Lieutenant Gutierrez for jumping on the Paloma Valley Coffee with the, Coffee with the Principal. There's been a lot of incidents at the school recently revolving around, you know, threats and things like that. And an opportune time came up and they were able to jump on the call and give a lot of grave advice. And it, it sounds like the school district might be leaning towards working with our department on an SRO program. So that's really good news to come of. You know, come to that meeting and a lot of the hard work that our department's been doing with our, our school. So just want to give a shout out. So again, thanks.
That's a, that's a good call. All right, we're going to move on now to our item nine. This is approval of the minutes. This is the minutes from January nineteenth. So all in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. We're now on our consent calendar. All matters on the consent counter to be approved in one motion unless a council member requests a separate action on a specific item on the consent counter. If the item is removed from the consent counter, it will be discussed individually and acted upon separately. Madam Clerk, do we know if there's any public comments on our consent calendar items, either virtually or in person?
I do not have any in-person signed up. Give me just a moment.
Okay, and I'll just remind any participant, virtually, if you want to participate, please use the raise hand on Zoom and our IT folks will notify the clerk. While we're waiting for those comments, I will ask council members, do you have any items that you would like to pull?
I'd like to pull ten point four.
Okay, any others, council members?
Ten six.
Ten six.
And I'll move approval to balance.
Second.
All right. So we do have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, do we know if anyone has raised their hand virtually?
No one virtually.
All right, thank you. So we do have a motion and a second for the balance. Do you want to? There we go. And we need Matt and Lisa to vote. Okay, that passes unanimously. So we'll go ahead and take our first polled item by Councilmember Sobek, which is item ten point four, the Behavioral Health Memorandum of Understanding or Cooperative Agreement for Crisis Triage Mental Health Services. What's your pleasure? Do you want a staff report or did you have a question?
I do. I just would like maybe, I have a question. Is what are we doing? How is this? What are we doing with the homeless? Is this a part of a program? How, I did get the answer. I did ask how many days a week this individual will be here. I understand it will be four days a week, ten hours a day. And then it mentions that you're taking an officer off of patrol. So I just, maybe you can educate me a little bit in this program.
Sure, I have a quick presentation I'll show you. Remember how to use this.
And thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. Ernie, what am I doing wrong? Pushed too many times. Hang on a second here. I go the right way. It was. Any questions? Sorry, Ernie, can you hook me up again? Had too much coffee today. So CBAT is the Community Behavioral Health Assessment Team. It consists of an officer. He's here tonight, Jason Cobb. Jason, raise your hand there. Jason works with Joel, Joel, Joel. Forget his last name, Jason. Gallego. And he's a clinician. He's experienced one. He came from the Hemet and they work together. And basically, their, their job isn't homeless, although they deal with some homeless. Their job is people in crisis, mental health crisis, people that are self-medicating with alcohol and drugs for their mental health. Their job is to try to get them services before they get into a crisis where we're using force or they're hurting a family member themselves. And I'll just show you some statistics. The last three months, they've had ninety-two calls for service. And the follow-ups doesn't look like a big number, but they go out and they try to find people that are continuously getting called on and we're going out and our patrol officers are, so we try to focus this team at those folks. They've helped. They've helped a lot of people so far. They've dealt with twenty-six homeless people. Twenty-six of that clientele are homeless. They've gone to the schools, helped juveniles. There's been a lot of school-related issues. So anything a clinician can do, and then Jason is there to provide support and law enforcement, if that's, that's called for. They've had a very good success rate so far. If you look at the, they, Joel keeps percentages of people that have accepted help. And so in the month of November, sixty-nine, seventy-one, seventy-seven, those are big numbers for folks that are, are, so they're diverting them from the criminal justice system and also trying not to put a mental hold on them, trying to get them the services they need and calming them down. And a lot of times they'll call a family member and say, hey, do you know that your son is in Menifee and this is what he's doing? And the parents have no idea and they respond. And then Joel and, and Jason Cobb spent a lot of time with the family member saying, here's your resources, here's. And so it's really a very holistic look at trying to help people. And they do keep statistics and, and I'll add this to my, my public safety report. Just so you know, all the police chiefs got together with county behavioral health and we've divided up the county. There's twelve teams. We're lucky to have one in Menifee. Officer Cobb predominantly works in Menifee, but if there are in Lake Elsinore or in some parts of Paris, if they need them, they leave the city to go help them. Doesn't happen very often, but that's the agreement we have amongst all the, the chiefs and behavioral health. We've divided this county amongst these twelve teams. Very successful and we're really lucky to have them. I, I just wanted to say that the, that, so I want to switch gears on you this tonight for, for the council is to approve our MOU with behavioral health for CBAT. But we do have Hope and our, our pop team is here, Officer Duran and Officer Terrell, and they work with Hope every day. By the way, these officers are available if you want to ask them questions. But Hope deals with homelessness and there's two clinicians. And I'll just give you an example how good they are. First off, they enjoy working with our two pop officers. They're here almost every day. The CBAT team is talking to them pretty much on an hourly basis. They're like, hey, we're dealing with this person. Hey, what about these services? But I went out a couple of days ago, actually a week before, and I bumped into a couple of homeless people I'd never seen before. They knew the Hope clinicians' names. They had appointments with them. They really, they were like, hey, they're helping us and we're meeting with them at two o'clock this afternoon. I've never had that happen before. So they are really aggressive and doing a lot of good stuff. And I'll show you some of their stats just real quick and then I'll, I'll stop talking. But just, just to give you that, you know, year-to-date in Menifee, they've talked to five hundred and sixty-seven people. That's a lot. And that's, that's a lot of touches, not just five hundred and sixty-seven people, but that's a lot of going back out. Hey, we talked to you yesterday. You're drunk. Well, how about we get you some help? How about we get you some, you know, therapy? And so you have a clinician in the CBAT team with Officer Cobb. You have two pop officers. You have two clinicians that work Hope. And then we're going to put Officer Hunter out as a homeless liaison. So we are attacking the problem with a lot of resources. And then just really quickly, Home Connect, there's an eight-hundred number here. We, we need to push this out because family members that have homeless family members, they don't know what to do. And they could, they could call us, but they can also call Home Connect and they'll hook them up with services and they, you know, might even have the Hope team come out and meet with them and help them out. So that's the whole, that's the approach from different prongs. Hope that answers your questions.
It does. You know, I looked at approving this and I saw that we only had, you know, I guess it's the Cobb team. This is what we're approving tonight, which I would like to approve. But I appreciate you sharing a little bit of the other picture because I was wondering what was going on in a day-to-day basis to. to, uh, address homelessness in our community. So, so thank you for that. So I'll make a motion that we approve. So I appreciate your report.
Before we vote our second, can I ask a question?
Please.
This, um, last slide with the Home Connect information?
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there any way through this program that this can be printed up and distributed to businesses in the community to have available? Because a lot of the, the community members that I speak to, I don't know if this is included in the program or the budget, but, um, businesses in the area that have contacts with homeless people, they don't know what to do.
Right.
And to be able to have something that they can just go, you know, when they talk to them and they go, by the way, here, take this and maybe it'll help redirect them or get them some point. Is there a way to distribute that to our community?
Yeah. So a couple of things are happening. Officer Cobb has been working on, uh, his, you know, CBAT, Community-Based Assessment Team pamphlet. And it kind of walks people through what to do when you have somebody in your fam, uh, family or whatever, neighbor, mental health issues. And we're doing the same with homelessness. We have a door hanger program we're going to do. Talk to the Rotary and the, um,
Interfaith.
Thank you, Interfaith Council, and we're going to do that soon. So we're creating a mission. We're going to go out and, and I think you're, I think that's a great, uh, call. The, the door hangers are good, but I don't think it has Home Connect. So yeah, I think a flyer would be a good idea.
And, um, if I could make a, a special request of you, I was talking to some members of the, uh, the Sun City Civic Association residents there. And I know that you have a, an article in the Court Courier.
Yes, sir.
That you do a column. Homelessness is a lot of questioning from those folks. Maybe a some, like a, a boiled down version of this as your topic for the next or soon thereafter column. This is great information for those folks who are really, they're frankly frightened and they don't know what to do. And this at least gives them numbers to call and get the right people out there.
Right.
To connect them up.
Well, and I think, I think you were talking about the Shella corporate, uh, Shella Foundation is, I think the people you were talking to that go check on people. And we're working with them as well because what happens is some of the homeless people take over people's homes in Sun City.
That's another concern, yeah.
And so if we could, if Shella and, and us can work together, we can find those folks and help them. So it's a great idea.
I was just going to ask if we could meet Officer Cobb.
Yeah, sure. Come on up, Jason.
So I, I think I got to meet you at the checkpoint that night.
Yes, sir.
So that was a good time with you that night. So I appreciate all your effort here tonight and, uh, maybe tell the rest of us where you, where you're from and what you hope to do.
Uh, my name's Jason Cobb. I'm from Scranton, Pennsylvania, uh, home of the office. I came from, uh, Sandy, uh, San Diego Police Department. So I worked down there with Per Team, which is a psychological evaluation response team as well. So we worked down here. I moved up here recently and I fell in love with the city. And I, plus they saw our vehicles, a big American flag. I can't, and I'm a Marine, so you can't help that. You gotta, you gotta do it. That's, that's what I am in a nutshell.
Excellent.
Thanks, welcome.
Yep, we're glad you're here.
So one day he helped me with a homeless individual who had asked me for money. And he showed up and we had a good talk, doing a good job.
Thank you, man. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jason.
I'll, I'll second the approval.
All right. We do have a motion. Now we have a second. So Madam Clerk, if you'd pull up the voting.
Can we confirm who the second was?
Uh, Councilman Carr, one. And that passes unanimously. Let's go to our next polled item. This was 10.6 polled by Councilman Leesmeyer.
And just to pull for a separate vote, so I can recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. So I'll make a motion to approve. Councilmember Sobek, I think we need a vote from you. Uh-oh.
Would you mind doing a voice vote and I'll record your vote? Yes.
All right, there we go. So that passes four to one. All right. Um, so let's now move to item 11. This is our public hearing items, 11.1. The first one is Community Development Block Grant for the next five-year consolidated plan. And this is an opportunity for the council to provide some preliminary priorities and have a discussion. Uh, so I believe we have Ms. LeBron here as usual with our CDBG program. Welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Council Members. Thank you for having me tonight. With me tonight, I have Christine Gah and Maria Gallegos from, um, Michael Baker's International. They are consultants. Michael Baker International was selected to do our five-year consolidated plan and our, and analysis of impediment as required by HUD. So they have taken the lead on this and now I'm going to turn over the mic to Ms. Gallegos. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Gallegos.
Thank you. And good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Uh, once again, my name is Maria Gallegos. I'm a consultant with, uh, Michael Baker International. And so this evening I'm going to be talking about, um, what is a consolidated plan? So their control's not working. So next slide, please. So the consolidated plan is designed to aid the city in assessing affordable housing and community development needs during the five-year period beginning July 1st of 2022 and ending June 30th of 2027. The CON Plan helps determine how funds from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development are used. The CON Plan requires a planning process. Reaching out to the community, having housing meetings and gathering data to ensure the programs are based, data-driven and place-based is one of the first requirements in the process. And we are currently working on edits for the draft analysis of impediments and anticipate having ready for public review near the end of this month. And, uh, the third requirement in the process is the city's strategic plan to address the city's priority needs and goals. And the fourth requirement is the completion of the consolidated plan, getting it adopted and approved by the City Council and then submitted to HUD for review and approval. Next slide. So the results that we received during the outreach, um, so let me back up. So we had, um, surveys done, community outreach and committee meetings. And those, uh, meetings and doing community outreach is to help the city identify the high priority needs that the 2022-2027 consolidated plan would need. And these identified, identified needs are then used to form the strategic plan, which informs and guides the city's action plan. Next slide. So the community feedback is required by HUD for the consolidated plan. And this helps the city identify the most urgent needs and ensures that those needs are aligned with the projects that obtain CDBG funding. We sent out an online survey from September 2021, I'm sorry, September 2021 to November 2021. Two community surveys were launched, one in English and one in Spanish. And we received 538 responses. We did some, uh, public outreach by putting, uh, the information on the city's webpage. We did an email blast to 375-plus organizations. We put it on social media, on Menifee Matters, on the Motts Museum. We had a Motts Museum meeting, rather, and a meeting at Quail Valley. And we conducted interviews with organizations that operate within the city of Menifee and partnering communities such as housing providers, health services, social services, organizations representing protected classes, fair housing, broadband internet providers and emergency management organizations. Next slide. So the purpose of speaking with these organizations is to get input on what specialized needs may exist in the city of Menifee that CDBG funding could assist, uh, could assist with. Organizations work closely with community members and can give us a personalized insight on issues of concerns to these communities. So some of the organizations we are speaking with are the Boys and Girls Club, the Riverside County Fair Housing Council, Hospice of the Valleys, Family Service Association, Lake Menifee Women's Club, the Menifee Valley Chamber of Commerce, Habitat for Humanity Inland Valley, and Veterans of Foreign Wars. And we have reached out to 41 organizations to get feedback. Next slide. As you can see in this slide, 33% of the surveys collected were completed by females and 66% completed by males ranging in ages 18 to 80-plus. Ages 35 to 44 was the age range with the most participation in the survey. White or Caucasian and Hispanic or Latino races mostly participated in the survey and 86% of homeowners in the city participated in the survey, 15% being renters in the city who participated in the survey as well. Next slide. So the top three housing programs that the city of Menifee should consider for the 2022-2027 consolidated plan cycle are one, an energy efficiency improvement program, an affordable rental housing program, followed by a senior housing, housing code enforcement and a down payment assistance program. Next slide. Moving on to community facilities and services. The top three you believe the city of Menifee should consider for the 2022-2027 consolidated plan cycle are youth centers, parks and recreational facilities and childcare centers. The top three community special needs services you believe the city of Menifee should consider for the 2022-2027 consolidated plan cycle are youth services, senior services and transportation services. Next slide. The top three homeless needs that you believe the city of Menifee should consider for the 2022-2027 COM Plan cycle are mental health and addiction services, food and clothing and emergency shelters. Next slide. The top three businesses would be job creation, small business loans and employment training. Next slide. And the top three infrastructure needs that the city should consider for the CON Plan are street improvements, sidewalk improvements and increased code enforcement. Next slide. The top three social services that you feel should receive financial support from the city are one, after-school programs and/or summer day camp for children, programs to at-risk youth and neighborhood crime prevention programs. Next slide. The City Council, I'm sorry, the city should consider broadband needs for the CON Plan cycle. Almost 65% of the residents who answered this section of the survey believe there are common pressing broadband problems such as high-speed connectivity availability and diverse providers. Next slide. Where we are. Like I mentioned earlier in my presentation, we are completing edits for the draft analysis of impediments to fair housing and anticipate having it ready for public review near the end of this month. The analysis of impediments is an analysis of the city's housing and economic market conditions. Next slide. And you be, and you may be asking this evening, what is an impediment? Impediments to fair housing choice are any actions, omissions or decisions that directly restrict or have the effect of restricting housing choices or housing availability because of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, national origin and financial status. And the analysis of impediments is a required component of the city's CON Plan. Next slide. Examples of impediments are discriminatory lending practices, access to opportunities such as access to quality schools, housing discrimination such as marketing language implying discrimination, land use policies and procedures such as availability of senior housing and emergency shelters and collaborating regionally such as working with regional organizations to address issues such as homelessness, homelessness within the city. Next slide. HUD looks closely at housing discrimination and fair housing laws, which is why the questions listed in this slide are included in the survey. Have you encountered housing discrimination? Do you believe housing discrimination occurs in the city? And what types of discrimination do you think are most prevalent? Based on the data collected, many of the residents in the city are not sure if they have encountered housing discrimination, nor do they think any housing discrimination takes place in the city. Next slide. As we're getting close to finalizing the city's draft of the CON Plan, we need to address the strategic plan, which is the city's priority needs and goals. We will pull this information from the results of the surveys, community outreach and meetings. And this concludes my presentation for this evening. I thank you. And at this time, if you have any questions, we are available to answer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gallegos. And do we have, uh, any more presentations as part of this process this evening? There's still more to come, right?
Oh, no, not this evening.
No. Okay. So I do have a couple of questions from council members. So stand by. Uh, first up is Councilman Leesmeyer.
So my question's a little bit out of left field. I'm looking at the data and I'm looking at other things, looking at other statistics and things that people are kind of talking about. Um, one of the things that jumped out at me early on, you were talking about housing code enforcement. When, when you take these surveys, are we, do we have access to all the data? So we can look specifically into what they're talking about and maybe learn a little bit more about other things that we could be doing differently in the city?
Can you reintroduce yourself, please?
Hi, my name is Christine. I, I work with Maria Gallegos, uh, it, with, uh, Michael Baker. So I need clarification on your questions. We had distributed the survey. Uh, we had had the city staff review the questions and the answers that we were putting in the survey to be the most relevant, to be able to zone in on, on topics that were CDBG available to be funded. And that's why they were chosen. Um, and that's how the questions were answered. There were some questions that they were allowed to answer other and put in clarifications and anything specific. If you'd like the raw data, we can definitely pull the raw data and show you what that, what that was.
So I guess my question is, is specifically on this housing code enforcement one. Is it, was that just like a bubble that somebody would check or did somebody actually?
It was. It was just a bubble somebody would check.
I see.
And if they found something, so a lot of the questions. So HUD requires community feedback and we need to identify as specifically as possible topics that can be funded and programs that can be funded by CDBG funds that the city receives. So we do put in a lot of other, um, in each questions so that citizens are allowed to put in specific needs, which is why the broadband slide came up because that was a huge topic that we found out, not only with the community outreach, but with the survey. A lot of citizens want to have more wiring within the city and have broadband accessibility. Um, and that was part of, uh, that we were surprised that came out of the survey as well. We have all the raw data and I'm more than happy to put that together. And we have an attachment that we have, that was part of the staff report that shows every single question we asked and how they laid out.
Yeah, I was, I was just wondering if there was a way we could, you know, use that data in other ways as well. I mean, and one of the things that also stood out was, people are still asking about Neighborhood Watch. I mean, we have our, our pop officers here and Officer Terrell. I mean, they know that they've, they've, you know, Duran, they, they put together a great report on how to, how to get Neighborhood Watch going and kind of going, well, why are people still asking? Because it seems like they've done a pretty good job trying to pump that information out. So maybe we.
I think that's a really, really good way to look at the data. I, I commend you on that because I think if we had some city staff, maybe, um, with Ms. LeBron. if we had some city staff, maybe with Ms. LeBron, look at the data and see where it can cross-reference other programs, so it supports those other programs. So if we say they're still asking for Community Watch, but we have this program, so clearly the marketing is not out there, or the information's not out there, so we can identify needs that may, we think the city's meeting, but maybe not, because this is the results that we have from the survey. No, that's a great way to look at the data, and we have it, and we've already collected it, so might as well use it to see what it can support and what it may show, where the city can further their communication with the community or, you know, programs that need to be identified within the community.
Thank you.
I do have others. Councilman Carwin.
Thank you very much. I have questions about this, but as a threshold question, does this apply to the community block grant program separate from community development needs? Is that all part of this?
I believe so.
So with regard to that, you know, I think most of us have served in that committee. The number one impediment that I hear from businesses who want to participate in that is the reporting paperwork. And I know that it's probably sent from on high the data, but the method of reporting is really onerous for the smaller businesses that need the financial assistance the most, either to get going or because they don't have as many staff members. In order to bring on staff members, they have to take resources away from doing their work to do the reporting. And I've talked to a number of businesses who just aren't getting involved in the program because they did it once, and they looked at the paperwork and they said, there's simply no way we can do that. Is there a like a liaison or some assistance that we can tell these businesses that they can take advantage of to get them through? Because a lot of, we see a lot of the same businesses apply and get grants every year, because once they do it a few times, they know how to do it. And that's, I find that to be a major impediment, to use your terminology.
Excellent use of terminology. So CDBG funds can be used to have workshops and training sessions where you can invite these small businesses who are overwhelmed by this kind of paperwork and have a staff member walk them through the paperwork. There is no way around it. These are HUD-required documentation to be able to ensure that the money is going where the money should be going, and the city is not liable to have to pay back HUD if the money didn't go to where it's supposed to go. You can use CDBG funds, though, to hold these kinds of workshops or to bring someone in as a kind of not a consultant, but kind of a liaison, and pay a certain amount from the CDBG funds to bring that person in to work with these small businesses.
I would love to see a program like that. You know, I'm sure we've all heard that in the program, and I won't belabor that point. Two things that jump out at me from this. How do I put this? Animals are people too. And I've been trying to find a way into CDBG for years for animal rescues because the service that they provide to the community, connecting people with pets, and especially seniors who might want a pet and need resources and those kinds of things. We've got several animal rescues within the city who don't qualify for CDBG because their clients are deemed to be dogs rather than the people who adopt.
So that is, that is a requirement by HUD. CDBG funds need to specifically, one of the national goals is to specifically help people of low to moderate income. People. So if they're helping people of low, moderate income, and they're assisting them, perhaps that frees up funding for them to adopt animals. There's kind of that kind of that thing. To have a organization such as a nonprofit animal, both of my puppies are rescued, so I feel what you're saying. To have an organization get funding directly from the city to help them, we have to somehow link low-mod income assisting these dogs assisting that community. And that is such a leap that it's very difficult, and it leaves the city vulnerable for HUD to reject or negate the funding that you've allocated.
Have any other cities been successful in bringing animal rescue into the program?
No. And I'm going to tell you, I've been a consultant for a while, and I work for major, major cities doing this particular con-plan AI process every five years. And it's very, and I work for some Northern California cities, and they are tree huggers and animal lovers. And they would love to give CDBG funds to that, but it's very, very difficult to do. It is more of an accessory aid, right? If you're aiding these people, low-mod income people through CDBG funds, through ESG, through Hopwa funds, the idea is if they're getting aid, then they have time to then adopt an animal or take care of an animal. But you can't do it directly. You probably could, but I just feel like it would expose the city to too much liability from HUD to try to make the dots connect.
And then my last question for you was, from my understanding, oversimplifying it, in our senior community, at least in my district on this part of the freeway, there are zero parks. And one of the things that the seniors tell me, that's a large part of my constituency, is they need someplace to go exercise outdoors. And for years, I've also been using the phrase dog park. Would love to have that, but I know that's a secondary ask. So in the community services, I see that there's two two spikes here for parks and recreational facilities and senior services. I'd like to see those two merge.
Perfect.
So to maybe give some recreational facilities to seniors that we don't have, that are not controlled by, you know, the homeowners, some people live outside the homeowners association.
You know, I can't speak for city staff, but with all the feedback we're getting from council, maybe we could do a dog park in a senior area. And so you've got your dogs being benefited, and you've got your seniors being benefited, and you've got your open space.
I think you've heard what I have to say.
Okay.
All right, Councilmember Sobek.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Maria and Christina, for being here. I had some of the same thoughts that Councilmember Lees Meyer did, that looking at the data and knowing that we have other funding sources, it looks like that some of the wonderful five hundred thirty-eight people who took time to do this survey were unaware that we had other services for some of the things that had spikes. When, you know, Councilmember Carwin was mentioning about the seniors in the parks, I also looked at the at your results and seeing that there's a need for recreation youth centers and youth stuff, and I was thinking of some of our, one neighborhood, I believe Quail Valley, I don't know if they even have a big park out in Quail Valley except for the county. I mean, there's activity, an activity park there where it has recreation in it. And knowing that there's needs in those communities for those youth, and I was happy to see that that was something that others in the community saw as well, but using that data that we already have resources for, I think would be good to somehow let us know in your report, well, this one, there is funding. So maybe it doesn't need to be a priority with the grant money. So that was something that I saw as well.
That's definitely what we do. So when we take the data, we don't take it verbatim. If it's a top three, what we do is we look and see what programs are already existing within the city, what are already being funded, like from previous con-plan cycles, what needs to continue, and where are there avenues for new programs or new areas of need that have been identified for this particular cycle.
It's a good report, and it's really helpful, and I can see the certain needs that we see. I see trends too, as being a council member, and I see that the community sees those same trends. And I know, I just want to give my hat off to Mrs. Lebon, who does such a great job. The Senior Home Program has benefited so many senior citizens who could not afford to have their roof re-roofed, and I know there's problems with the plumbing systems in Sun City area, and some have been able to get the help that they've needed. So it's been a blessing to a lot of people, so I'm excited for this next cycle.
To piggyback very quickly on your comment, I also want to give commendations to Ms. LeBron because she manages the Rental and Mortgage Assistance Program that has kept a lot of people in their homes during this pandemic. And she is doing it, you know, we're kind of helping her, but she is the one managing this program, and she's doing it admirably well.
Yes, and I've heard it's just been a lot of work. So thank you, Ms. LeBron.
All right, and I do have some comments, but I see Councilman Lees Meyer's in here, so we'll take that first.
Yeah, just to piggyback real quick with Lisa, the there's a couple of neighborhood parks in Canyon Heights, but there is one large park area that was cut off by the HOA, the neighbors Quail Valley, and they had a lot of drug problems back in their heyday. But there might be an opportunity to partner with that neighborhood and maybe take over that park and figure out a way to integrate that into the city system. So there's opportunities out there, but it has to be done carefully because of the rural nature of Quail Valley and accessibility to services and PD and community services and things like that. So that's one of the challenges. But I wanted to ask, you know, she reminded me that there was five hundred and thirty-eight people that took this. That's a lot. I mean, compared to those surveys that we've done at the city, I mean, is it, is it possible for one person to go in there and do it multiple times?
We set up Survey Monkey so that you are, I mean, if they want to take it on their phone and a tablet and a computer, yes, but we've set it up so that once the ISP address has been identified, they are no longer allowed to take it again.
That's great.
If they log back in, they cannot retake the thing.
That's great. Thank you.
Were you planning something nefarious, council?
I wasn't. I'm just always looking for
Just checking, because that was a very pointed question.
I'm always looking at things differently. I look through a different lens.
I appreciate the opportunity tonight to be able to do this five-year cycle and for us to be able to provide feedback. Really, this is about priorities, and I really appreciate both council members, Sobek and Lees Meyer, talking about Quail Valley, and it is one of our economic challenged neighborhoods. It's a disadvantaged community, I guess is the way to put it. And I'd like to make a suggestion because I know that the city owns property, and maybe Edna's aware of this, but it's right on the corner of Getz and Juanita. It's two acres. It's something that the county had once had, and we now own that property. We've owned it for a while, and it's been sitting vacant. I would love to see us program some funds to develop some kind of a community center right on that property. And it would be something that benefits our youth, our senior services. It would have childcare potentially. It could have computer labs. It can offer Wi-Fi for those folks that need it. It could have workforce training, placement of jobs. It can have transportation stop right there. It can just benefit this economically disadvantaged community. This is our five-year plan, and every year we talk about CDBG programming for some of our service organizations in town that qualify. But this is the one opportunity to think about something big, and I know there's CDBG slash CV money that's available right now as well. So I would love to see us, if we're able to, figure out a way to get approval to program those funds that we're talking about into something that really hits the ground and really serves this community.
So that is definitely doable. If it's city-owned property, I would imagine economic development has a handhold on the distribution of that property. And economic development is definitely a priority in low-mod and disadvantaged communities. And so I don't think that should be a problem. It's something that Edna can speak to.
And the reason I brought this map up is because if you see on this map, Menifee only has nine qualified census tracts per HUD, and Quail Valley no longer exists within that qualified census tract.
Really?
So that might be an issue. And the reason we were told is because of all the new construction happening by Quail Valley.
Interesting. Okay. Well.
Are all nine of those in Sun City?
That's news.
So you have Roma Land. Yeah, Sun City is the majority. And then I forget what that other area is. I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the city. But yeah, the majority is Sun City. Yes, you may.
So there is a caveat to all of this. If you do set up a facility or help an organization that is adjacent to these identified income tracks, so within reasonable distance, so that those communities will also benefit, that's a little bit of the workaround, but again, reasonable distance, we have to go into the technicality of that, and we have to make sure the city is covered so that when HUD comes back and does any audits, everything is buttoned up and looks good.
Okay, Councilman Lees Meyer.
So I got to piggyback at the mayor here. This is, it's the disadvantaged status for Quail Valley. I brought this up a couple of meetings ago with our community development director, and she'd indicated the same thing. Primarily because EMWD is chasing some money out there, and that's one of the thresholds that they need to cross. I would really like to see if we could figure out how to get that fixed. Because looking at specifically, I'm going to call it the grid. The grid is larger than two of the census areas that are up in Sun City. So it just kind of blows my mind why at least a couple of portions of Quail Valley couldn't still be in that qualified area. That disadvantaged status was pulled probably even prior to cityhood by the Quail Valley Community Group.
No, and I agree. I truly believe that Quail Valley does need the help. The only other way that I could possibly think of going back to HUD and saying, look, we're going to go door-to-door and knock and get each and every person.
Sorry, get each and every person to do an income qualification to see if they truly fall within the low mod. And I'm pretty sure if we went door-to-door or whatever it may be to get that information back from them, then we can take that back to HUD and say, look, your information is wrong. This is a qualified census tract.
Well, isn't that information given to the school that's in that area, they know? Well, they used to have free lunch program, and they would know how many in that free lunch program they were qualified because they were low-income families.
It would, but we would need at least fifty-one percent of those persons within that qualified census tract to qualify within low mod. So we need to make sure we get at least fifty-one percent of them.
Thank you.
You know, that's definitely something that the city can look into, doing a very specialized, very targeted survey to be able to reach the maximum amount of people. And to Edna's point, as long as we have the data that confirms the actual income levels of that area, the whole point of distributing the funding for the city side of it is when HUD comes knocking back a year later or two years later and says, okay, you gave this non-qualified census tract X amount of money to build this, the city has the data that they've collected, and HUD will back down. But without that data, that's why the consolidated plan, the analysis of impediments to fair housing, is extremely data-driven. Without that data, HUD will come back and say, why? Explain. You will get an audit. And my job for you is to ensure that the funds come to you seamlessly and as un-auditable as possible.
All right, but you're saying there's a chance.
Always a chance.
So I'm thinking that we could possibly write a section in the con-plan that talks about this challenge that we have in Quail Valley so that we, and then indicate that we're going to look at that and maybe do a specific survey to find out. Because we do know, we have knowledge that there is a certain group out there that is financially challenged. So could we do that in the con-plan to write a section about it, about the specific area?
I am going to have to look at the, so just to give a quick background, I mean, we gave a quick background for the reason. The report itself is highly, highly structured from HUD. Each section, they ask exactly what they want, right? And deviations from HUDs, so I don't know if anyone has worked with HUD, they're horrible. Deviations from what they want raises red flags for them, right? And they could be superfluous red flags. I've had cities had red flags for no other reason than, oh, it's that city. So they're already flagging the con-plan, right? I try not to deviate from the structure and the format when we're putting the con-plan together, but to your point, I will look through it because we are allowed to do summaries, and we're allowed to do, you know, a little bit of storytelling at the beginning for the data. I may be able to put that in there. I make no promises, but there's always a chance.
Good. That's what I wanted to hear. All right, so because this is a public hearing item, there is some formality, so I am going to open up the public hearing now. All right. So because this is a public hearing item, there is some formality. So I am going to open up the public hearing now. And Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence on this item?
No correspondence.
And was it legally noticed?
Yes, it was.
Do you know if there's any speakers, either virtual or in-person, for public testimony on this item?
I do not have any public speakers in the audience signed up and no speakers in Zoom.
All right, I'll close the public hearing now at 8:01 and back. Open discussion. Any other direction? Any other thoughts, council members? All right, I think we're, we've and Armando, you're still in.
Just, just one more thing. I heard loud and clear, you know, it's, it's very expensive to do community surveys. And, you know, we, we do take a lot of the, this data to also look at other programs that we can fund with other sources of money. So we are going to be looking at the results of, of the survey to draw from, from this other needs that we have, you know, for example, the community center concept, the the recreational center concept. And we do have some assets that we could direct funding, other sources of funding, in the event that we cannot fund those specific programs with CDBG money or HUD money. So we take a look at that survey and we draw from it to do other things.
Good.
Also, if I could very quickly, I would love to reach out to each one of you and do a stakeholder interview for, for each one of you. If, if I have permission to email and send out an email and set up some time, and maybe you can go into depth of your concerns and what you're really looking at and what you really want the funding. And if you have questions about how funding can be spent, what the actual document looks like and why sometimes our hands are tied. You know, the council, the mayor, the city manager, I would love to send email out, but I wanted to get your permission first before I just blasted you with a random email.
I see heads shaking. Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you for, for that option. Well, and thank you, Armando, for what you just said, because I really still believe that there's a need and we have that property, and maybe it just is something that's part of our strategic plan. It's something that could be put into as a capital improvement if it can't be done through CDBG, but I think that it's a, a real need and we have this great opportunity owning that property. So. Anyway, council members, anything else on this item? Hearing now, and thank you so much for being here. We appreciate you guys with the update. Can you tell us what's next? It comes back to us.
So we're going to come back to you once the analysis of impediments has gone through their 30-day public review. Once we've completed all the edits from between us and city staff, we will notice for a public review, the public will be allowed to read through the analysis of impediments if they can't sleep.
That's good reading.
Right. If they want to put their kids to bed. But, and then we will aggregate comments back from the public and incorporate them into the AI. Once that is done and staff has approved, we will come back to council to show our findings, present the AI. And then the final meeting with council will be when the consolidated plan is complete and has gone through its 30-day review. And we've incorporated all that so we can give you the findings of what the next five-year goals will be for the CDBG funds for the city of Menifee.
Excellent. And we think that's April, May, something like that?
Thereabouts, yes.
All right, very good. Thank you, guys. We appreciate you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, council members, let's move on. We are now on item 12. This is a discussion item. 12.1 is a memorandum of understanding with Menifee Global Medical Center. Mr. City Manager, would you introduce this item, please?
Yes, Mayor, and members of the council, what we have tonight is a memorandum of understanding to begin to go, uh, working with the local hospital to, to try to develop some economic development from it. And I have Peter Baronoff and representatives here today, but also have Gina Gonzalez, which will help us overview the, the contents of the MOU.
Excellent.
Thank you, Armando. If I could have the presentation pulled up, please? Uh, if there's a clicker. Next slide. Thank you. As you know, since incorporation in 2008, our population has nearly doubled to just over 105,000. The city and its regional partners have consistently been working together on advancing our region to really form a regional economic hub for excellence in healthcare from birth all the way to the end-of-life care, from research to development and even cancer care. Our city has consistently been working to develop and build a safe, thriving, and premier place to be. And we strive to continue to enhance our overall quality of life for our residents, businesses, and overall our regional trade area. Strong components of a strong quality of life include our amenities, our infrastructure, education, parks, our public safety, housing, and healthcare. Through this, our city council strategic goal has asked for partnering with healthcare entities. Our SEDS, or our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, identifies healthcare facilities and medical firms of one of our key industries. Our Menifee Jobs Blueprint Plan, that's in draft, also identifies healthcare job creation. So through our continued development of additional healthcare amenities, physicians, specialized networks, overall, Menifee could easily more, excuse me, could more easily diversify our local economy, enhancing medical care and overall health of our city. This would provide needed care not only for our fast-growing population needs, but also creating much needed, needed and targeted healthcare careers locally within our region. Within the last three years, Menifee has added over 50 new healthcare businesses and networks and is working hard with our local partners to attract new research facilities, new healthcare, excuse me, healthcare firms and businesses bolstering our overall industry in Southwest Riverside County. Just an overview of the MOU. Menifee Global Medical Center is our only medical hospital facility currently within Menifee. Their mission is to support and maintain a full range of specialty services that serve both our inpatient and outpatient acute care needs. Menifee Global is confident about providing our residents and surrounding region with the most comprehensive personalized treatment plan available in the healthcare industry. And over the years, they've explored expanding the hospital for additional office facilities for patient care, possible physician and local nursing schools, and also partnership opportunities for local students, creating pathways and pipelines at the hospital and local schools for in-demand positions and workforce needs. It proposes a partnership, our MOU proposes a partnership to help advance healthcare within Menifee and our surrounding region through co-promotion of organizations, our events, and any type of like and similar activity. Together, we would work to support and enhance and explore possibilities to strengthen healthcare in Menifee and through our workforce together. We would explore opportunities to expand the medical facility and also work together to identify strategies to support the medical needs of our residents incoming and as well as surrounding region. We would identify enhancements to help develop the medical facility as a central hub, thereby allowing Menifee to be recognized as a regional medical economic engine or hub and become what they call an anchor institution and play a much larger role in the vitality of our area. And within the staff report, staff is recommending allocating up to about $30,000 for professional service agreements to be used at a later date for possible marketing feasibility studies, healthcare needs, or any other partnership request to accomplish this set goal. Staff's recommendation is to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the MOU with the city of Menifee and Menifee Global Medical Center. And as Mr. Villa mentioned, Mr. Peter Baronoff, the CEO and managing director of Menifee Global Medical Center, KPC, is here with us tonight.
All right, welcome. And Mr. Baronoff, if you want to come to the podium, because at this point, council members are going to be asking some questions, and I think you're the right person to answer them, but I'll give you a minute to just kind of introduce yourself and share a few words to compliment what Gina just presented.
Thank you, Mayor Zimmerman, and it's nice to see everyone here tonight. The Menifee Global Milk Medical Center has played an important part in many, many people's lives in this community. To date, we have seen thousands of patients with COVID-19. They range all ages. Tonight, we still have many in the hospital. This hospital of 84 beds has been full with COVID patients. We've even gone as far as putting a COVID separate patient wing in our lobby when it was closed off to visitors. When I first stood before you two years ago, or a couple of years ago, it was the first night this room was open, and I gave a report. The video wasn't working, and I had to do a little hand language. Being that I have a background as a former two-term city council member in another city, I got the drift as to what I had to do when I came to the podium. And I had to talk about the needs of the community. I've only been here four years, and when I first came here and I looked at the hospital, I questioned whether the city of Menifee really needed the hospital. And what we saw during the pandemic, with every bid being full, is you need this hospital. You have a senior community with respiratory illness. You have homes being developed. You sit here night after night, as I once did, taking the dais, looking at entitlements, having developers talk to you, all with self-interest. Our interest is in the care in this community. People who are buying homes in that area literally stop by the hospital to walk in. We have limited visitors in many respects, but they want to know what's going on at the hospital. What departments do you have? We have a 35-acre campus, yet we don't use much of it. We've suffered greatly during the pandemic, and you've read about it in the newspaper. Labor problems left and right, PPE problems left and right. Yet, we've never turned down someone who's come in our doors, never said no. Each and every night and day, the employees in that building are heroes. Approximately 96% of them have been out on COVID leave. When I was last here two years ago, I was talking about a flu vaccine clinic. How different times are now. Very, very different. So we looked, how are we doing through all this? Well, we're meeting a need of a community, yet, and we are the hospital in the community. That is true. But how is it affecting us? It's affecting us where financially, a nightmare. But we have to look to the long term. We hope, just like you, sooner or later, we won't have to use these. We certainly promote vaccinations and boosters and go to the great distance to do that for the community when they come in during our vaccine clinics. And we appreciate the mayor and the mayor pro tem and Gina for being on our advisory board. Their input has been very instrumental. And we appreciate the city manager meeting with us to hear out exactly what's going on in the hospital. Hospitals and healthcare are viable needs in a community. They also create an economic opportunity. Why shouldn't McCall be a medical district for this community? Should it not be any less important than Newport? We have an opportunity to talk about the help we need, but you can't do it without a partnership with the city. I sat in your chairs when I did a partnership with the city. I made it my business to understand the healthcare needs of the community. I don't second-guess anyone else from coming to the podium and expressing their needs, but this need is a biggie. And we want to sit and have a partnership and have meaningful discussions on the help you can provide and open ourselves up so you can see the reality that we deal with. The ownership of the hospital has subsidized it for years. The subsidies are the greatest they've ever been. The opportunity is now to try to move the healthcare pendulum forward. So in this memo of understanding is an opportunity for us to ask you for your help and for you to tell your constituents you stepped forward in the name of healthcare and the hospital in your community. I'll answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baronoff. We appreciate you being here tonight. And council members, this is an opportunity for questions at this time. We're not going to give discussion comments yet, but a good opportunity for questions. And I see Councilman Leesmeyer is in the queue.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you for being here tonight. A couple of things that, that I wanted to ask about specifically with the slides. It just kind of, you know, really quickly. Over the years, Menifee Global has explored expanding the hospital with, you know, kind of so on and so forth. Nursing school, partnership opportunities, things like that. Where did that go? It was explored, but it doesn't really tell the story.
I only know the history that I heard. And, you know, the history that I heard before they got here, that there were preliminary discussions. And it never really went anywhere. I think it takes leadership to move the ball forward. I don't think it could be done individually as a, a hospital acting as any other business and just wanting to expand. It takes a city partnership and understanding and wanting to facilitate those healthcare needs in the community and getting behind it. You know, most cities view healthcare as an important civil responsibility. They look at how much they have in each area. One of the things I committed to the night I was on the podium is that our medical group would take the largest space in the Han Building across the way. We put in there orthopedic surgeons, the first endocrinologist in this community to treat those with diabetes, which is very prevalent, was not here in Menifee, which should have outraged you. We put in specialties, but it's not enough. What's here is definitely not enough for a community of this growth. So rather than us take it upon ourselves, make decisions, do things that might not align with your constituents, we're encouraging us getting together and not doing it as a private institution, but doing it as a public-private partnership that we need your help.
A minute ago, you, you'd mentioned that there was a 35-acre campus that, that you guys don't use.
No, we use part of it. That's where the hospital is. A lot of empty space. You drive by there, you can't miss it.
Why, why is it that you guys aren't utilizing that?
Well, we have a hospital on it now, but let's talk about what it should be. Let's, how do we make the hospital the most viable it can be so it can generate other things around it? So you first start with the hospital, and then you look at the scope as to what it can be. But we first got to start with what the needs are for the mothership. Okay.
I have a question from Councilmember Sobek.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baronoff, for being here. Before you were here, there was another representative, and I served for four years on that advisory committee. And when I served on that advisory committee, we were told that on that 35 acres, that they were going to take down the orange trees and they were going to put up a senior care facility. We were told that there were plans to build a medical office building in front of the hospital, so the doctors could be right there and serve the hospital. I know that there was a plan, and I believe it got, it, it happened, and that was the detox floor. Do you still have the detox facility there?
Yes, we do.
Okay. You talk about the healthcare needs of our community. I so appreciate that because that is a priority of us as well is our healthcare needs of the residents that live here, that we now have 105,000-plus residents. And we don't have, you don't deliver babies. There's no OB-GYN facility there, but yet our average age is, I think, between 32 and 34. So we would like a hospital that would meet those needs. I do see in the valley here, being on the cancer care task force. I do see in the valley here, being on the cancer care task force, which I served on, there was Don Byber or Mr. Byber, he's passed away since. He also served on that cancer care task force. We saw a need to bring certain things here in the valley and so I want you to know that we do care about our people's health and that is a priority for, I think, for all of us here. I just see that some of the things that I was told about over four years ago haven't happened yet. And so I would like to see the hospital meet the needs a little better. We have more people here than just senior citizens and sometimes we have to move our cheese. And I'm hoping that the hospital might look at something like that. I know you're talking about a memorandum of understanding. I think that there might be a possibility where the city can, can help with that economic interest. We want it to be a hospital that is successful. We want it to be a hospital where people want to go, but it needs to be a hospital where all of our residents can go. Like you said, they stop by. Yes, we have thirty-four home builders in this community, I believe, thirty-two to thirty-four. And young families are moving here and they are checking out the schools. They check out the medical facilities. They check out the shopping. And so I've lived here since nineteen eighty-nine. I remember when the hospital was new. I remember having to take children to the emergency room there to get stitches. And so I just asked, you know, on some of these questions, is the medical offices going to happen? Is the senior care facility going to happen that was supposed to be in the orange groves? Are you going to look at the care needs of younger families?
To answer your questions, that's one of the reasons for this MOU. So we could explore those. We had a woman who came in and her question at the front desk is, do you have a women's health center? Do you do mammograms at this facility? I mean, it's a great question for someone who thinks, was thinking of moving to a community. So you will have the input in all of this. And it'll also be an opportunity to see what we can get done, how we can get, get it done. And, you know, what the roles are going to be and what help you could provide. So it's not going to be a one-sided event. You know, when I've done this before, sitting on your side of the table, you know, the hospital came forward and the largest need that was evident to the, the city council that I sat on was just that, a women's health center and a neuroscience center. Today, those two are two of the most prominent in the state of Florida in the country. And it all happened as a result of a few of my colleagues. I won't take credit for that. And I can tell you, you know, people stepped up in a variety of ways to get involved. And today, the Marcus Neuroscience Center is one of the most famous neurological centers in America. So there's ways to get it done, but the way it was done in the past just wasn't viable.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council members? All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak either virtually or in person tonight on this item?
Do not have anyone in person and.
Peter, if you'd stay, please. Yeah, we're going to open up for discussion in just a sec.
No one's indicating they'd like to speak on Zoom.
Okay, so before we call for a motion on this MOU, I just wanted to open it up for an opportunity for council members to just kind of share some thoughts now. I know some of you have already jumped, jumped the gun, but that's okay. So, Councilman Lee Smire.
So I'll kind of continue with where I was headed. I'm, I'm really struggling with this and I'll be perfectly honest with everybody, right? I don't think it's right to paint a picture that we don't care about healthcare in the city if we don't support doing this MOU. That's not a fair statement. I, I sit back and I look at the region, you know, we went to two groundbreakings last month, the two, two hospitals just down the street that are reinvesting in their hospitals. Huge expansions. I'm hearing of Tectacle Hospital has another huge expansion themselves. I'm looking at them and they're, they're doing what they need to do. Kaiser's right down the street, Loma Linda's down the street. They're all doing what they need to do in order to grow their hospitals and bring the service that our region needs. There's no question in my mind that we are underserved. I'm just really struggling with, why do we need to help them figure out what they need to do? It seems really obvious to me that they know what they need to do. They're just not doing it. And I, maybe somebody can help me understand that because I'm just really not supportive of the city helping out a private, a private entity like this.
Okay. Other thoughts, council members? Councilmember Sobek?
Yeah, you know, reading over the MOU, I see that it, there was, it's pretty much us helping them, them helping us a little bit and helping them understand. I would save this thirty thousand for approval for future thing that before any financial money is spent on this MOU, that it comes back before the council. But the MOU itself, if they need to get some updated information, help with the feasibility study marketing to help with the economic driver, that's what I'm looking at. I don't mind giving that an opportunity, just looking it over. I think it's pretty basic. It's a partnership, but before we spend any money on it, I would say that that would need to come before the council back.
And I think that's what's proposed, right Gina? So, so we're not approving any money tonight?
And I didn't know, Mr. Baronoff, did you want to explain how your business plan is very different than neighboring?
Sure.
Facilities?
Sure. Those, those facilities do get money from their communities, from their foundations. They don't reach in to their own pockets, their nonprofits. They operate differently than we do in many regard. So, you know, for the notion that they're just writing a check without going to their communities is absolutely not true. And we want to put together a plan for not only the viability of the hospital, but, but for what that campus should be. And it's got to be fairly comprehensive.
How, how are you guys different? I mean, you guys, I mean, hospitals have investment boards. They have groups of doctors that invest. I mean, are you guys, does, does Menifee Global operate that much differently than that? I mean, or I'm just not understanding how they're so much different.
We, we operate under the same quality requirements and clinical efficiencies based on Title twenty-two. That we do the same, but the model to which they operate, they have foundations. They have charitable endeavors in their community. Many, listen, many hospitals get supported by cities, by counties, by states at the federal level. And.
And how come you don't?
What?
And how come?
We have been an independent for-profit institution. And we have not gone out and yet, it's open for discussion. We haven't set up any type of other arrangement with any other entity, not to say that we wouldn't, but we're going to explore it and talk about it.
Councilmember Sobek?
Yeah, I just, you know, you brought up a question or a thought that I had to maybe have a question. When I did serve on the advisory committee, I learned that Menifee Global had hospitals and other buildings all over the world. And so I'm just wondering, some, if, if some of those are very successful, that you're not using some of those to invest into this hospital? Are, are you in using them to invest in this hospital?
The answer is yes. The answer is definitively yes. And there's only one other hospital outside the United States that's in India. But this hospital has been subsidized continually. It's never had a month that, you know, I could say it didn't need a subsidy. And and both the city manager and the mayor expressly heard that from the owner in a meeting. And that's been a, a commitment to the community.
A commitment to?
Sustain the hospital.
Okay, all right. Thank, thank you.
Councilman Dynas.
Thank you. I understand, I, I'm listening to the conversation. I can see where there's some concern about helping a, a private entity. If the city helping it. It's, I mean, in some cases, unique, it's a hospital, it's something that serves our, our, our community. But at the same time, make sure that we're not I guess, say just singling this one out for support. You know, because I know the first thing that people, oh, you're supporting the hospital, you know, there goes my tax dollars, I think is what the first thing is. But I think, and from my understanding of the MOU, we're here to, this is initial discussions with the hospital, between the hospital and the city is, is to identify, maybe identify the needs or, or just have that conversation as to what the city and the hospital can do to cooperate with each other and, and get the ball rolling to start bringing in maybe other disciplines or anything like that, how we can help advertise and promote the hospital or give our technical and expertise when it comes to the governmental side of, of developing land and things like that. So, you know, to me, I just see this as a, as a first step and just opening up discussions and see where that leads. I mean, whatever is decided in those discussions, we'll have to come back to the council and those decisions will be made then, but I see no harm in at least having that discussion and seeing what we can do as a partnership to, to better the healthcare in our, in our community. Last two years kind of showed that, you know, healthcare is pretty important in our community with all that's been happening. So I think if it's, if it's just to open a dialogue and to see what can be done, because I'm not too sure what can be done. But until we have that conversation and start talking about it, then we'll never know what can be done.
I'd like to say a few things myself. And again, I appreciate you being here and I'm definitely in support of this MOU. It's a way for us to recommit and I think we've been, I've been committed and I think this city's been committed to supporting this hospital because the fact is we're doing this because we care for our residents. And this Menifee Medical Center is absolutely essential for the health and the welfare of the people that live here. But I want to share a couple of things. I know a couple of years ago, I met with Dr. Chadry, I met with you. And before that, Mr. McLaughlin, and we talked a lot about things that were happening over there. But I remember a concern that Dr. Chadry had and he said, Mayor, we have a unsafe entrance into our community and we'd like the city to make a commitment to us. And I went back to the city manager and it was something that the city at the time made a commitment, a capital improvement project to install a signal there. There was a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar commitment right at the entrance for the campus, hospital campus on McCall. We are currently resurfacing McCall from the freeway to the hospital. We're in design right now for interchange at McCall. All of these things are moving traffic safely to you. Those are capital improvements we can do. We can't always commit funds to private properties, but we can do things outside of that property. I think that's a huge commitment that we've made. And I, like I said, I've been supportive of the concept of an education campus like Lisa said and, and the extended care, the living space condos and things, if you're going to be recovering and, and it's a little more comfortable to be in something like that. I love that idea. I thought that was great. And I remember a couple of years ago, Dr. Chadry was concerned that maybe the city didn't care for the idea or wasn't supportive of that and asked for a meeting. And I arranged that meeting with our city manager and you were there and, and our staff. And you presented those concepts and I think everybody said this would be a good thing for our community. And so we wanted to just confirm that support for you. And then Councilman Dynas, as you mentioned, with the two of us serve, we volunteer to serve on that advisory committee because we want to stay connected and have our finger on the pulse. If we didn't care if members of our community like Bob O'Donnell or Vicky Carpenter didn't care, George Mills, these are all people on that committee and they love this city and they want to make sure that the hospital stays viable for those same reasons I mentioned before. There's been health fairs that you guys have hosted. You did ribbon cutting when you expanded on that fourth floor and I attended that and I spoke at that and I've always been an advocate verbally in public for this medical center. And you came to me and you said, Bill, I want to get connected to your Chamber of Commerce. And that day, I arranged a meeting with you and me and the CEO of the Chamber and you joined the Chamber and thank you for that. You were actually a sponsor for a state of the city that year. So these are just some things that come to mind that I know we've done as goodwill, I guess, efforts and shown this commitment year after year. It's just recently that Dr. Chadry kind of came and said he doesn't feel like Menifee's supporting him anymore. And, and that was hard to hear because I've been on this path and haven't wavered a bit and been solid supporter. And I want to just recommit that tonight. This MOU does that. This is our way of shouting it to, from the rooftops. We support Menifee Global Medical Center and we support you. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this MOU tonight. And hopefully this leads to some better things and good things in the future. Sure.
I'm also in support, but as you heard earlier, I looked through a different lens. What I heard there was the city has committed, 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 but it doesn't sound like it's good enough for Dr. Chadry. So I'd like to hear from him what he's committed to do for us, for the city. So with that, I would go yes.
Maybe you guys can go to lunch and. Okay.
And can I just make sure that we, we don't spend city monies on this unless it comes back before us?
I think that's, that's the way the, the motion is. Yep. All right, so we're taking our votes. Councilmember Sobek, I think we need you and and I see that that passes four to one. Councilman Carwin is abstaining, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, again, Peter, thank you for being here. Yeah. And give our regards to the team. I know Keith's working hard over there. Yeah. All right, let's move to our next item. This is twelve point two. Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. And Mr. City Manager, would you please introduce this?
Yes, Mayor and council member, members, this is a, this was a future agenda item and I think we have a, a plan that we'd like to share with you for our event to welcome our, our Vietnam veterans. So, Mariana, you ready?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Mariana, my name is Mariana Mitchell, Community Services Manager. And I'm pleased to bring for you a brief presentation on what potentially Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day could look like here in Menifee. First, I'd like to point out that as we know, Menifee is a proud and patriotic city. And there are a number of programs and events that we currently have in place that fully support and honor our Vietnam veteran, our, our veterans in the city of Menifee. A couple of examples of those items are our annual events that we host both in May and November, our Memorial Day Ceremony and our Veterans Day Ceremony, which are both very well attended to the point to where we're looking at expanding our seating and shading for the residents in attendance. We also have our military banner program where our Menifee residents could recognize and honor a loved one who's either currently serving or has served in the military by purchasing a banner. That can be displayed in one of Menifee's major thoroughfares. We also have the Buy a Brick Program that's available for Menifee community and businesses to purchase a brick that can be, that will be engraved and then installed into the Menifee Veterans Memorial at Wheatfield Park. So again, the resources and the partnerships that are established to ensure that we have these events and programs are clearly demonstrating Menifee's commitment to honoring our veterans and our. Clearly demonstrating Menifee's commitment to honoring our, uh, veterans and our, and their families here, uh, throughout the city. So just a brief overview on, um, Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. Here in California, that day has been declared as March 30th. And essentially, uh, this is a way, a day that's dedicated to honor, uh, veterans, Vietnam veterans and their families. Who ultimately were denied the hero's welcome they so well deserved 40 years ago. Next slide, please. So after consulting with our partners in the VFW, we have a proposed event, um, that, uh. Is essentially a ceremony that could potentially take place here in the city council chambers. Um, on Wednesday, March 30th of this year. And, uh, the ceremony would include some of our familiar components such as the presentation of colors, the national anthem. A keynote speaker, remarks from some of our elected officials, the presentation of certificates. Um, so a couple of things that, uh, council would like to consider. Are whether or not you'd like to see any additional elements included on some type of, uh, similar to this, if this is the appropriate location. And whether, uh, not the timing, um, during the day, or if this is going to be, um. A regular annual reoccurring event. So those are some things that you might want to consider. Um, so that concludes my brief report and, um, here for any questions or any additional feedback or direction.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mariana. And council members, I'll just remind you that we're, uh, gonna have questions right now and then we'll take public comments and then we'll open it up for discussion. So at this point. Any questions for Mariana or our staff? Hearing no questions. Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, are there any requests to speak on this item? Virtually anyone? With us with a hand raised?
I don't have anyone in the audience that would like to comment.
All right. Thank you. So council members, we'll go ahead and open it up now for discussion. We'll start with Councilman Dynas. I believe this was your.
This was my, uh, my future agenda item. Um. For those old enough to remember the sixties and the seventies during the Vietnam War and watching the. Uh, reaction of our citizens when our troops came home was, it was, uh, nothing but heartbreaking, in my opinion. My military service started right after the, the end of the Vietnam War and, uh. I just got a small taste of what they went through and it wasn't pleasant, the point where we never wore our uniform out in public most of the time. Most of, uh, most of those today, you know, um. Our residents were probably, uh, you know. Were probably even around, not even twinkle in their parents' eyes if their grandparents even had a twinkle in the eye for their parents. Um. But, you know, after nine 11, a lot of things changed. Uh, the country changed as their attitude towards, um, the military. And, you know, you look at previous wars, they came back heroes. Uh, most. Vietnam veterans were just happy to come home and, and kind of disappear and, and blend into the fabrics of our society because of the way they are treated. So. When I saw that, there, there was a Vietnam, Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. It's, and I thought that we're an appropriate way to allow our. Residents here that are Vietnam veterans a chance to be welcomed home in a way, in a manner they deserve. I don't see this as an ongoing, uh, event. But something that at least a one-time event that will allow some closure on some of our veterans that are, that were, uh, served in Vietnam. And the ability to, uh, slap them on the back, shake their hands and say, welcome home. And, you know, that we actually do appreciate their service. Uh, it was not easy for them. It was the first, uh, war that was, uh, fought on television as much as at the bottle, the battlefront. And I think that made a, a difference as well. So, um, something I think that, uh. Our, our city has a strong commitment to, to the veterans. Uh, we ho- hold them in high regard. And I think, uh, this is one way we can show those service members that, uh. Did not have the pleasure of being welcomed home the proper way to do it now. And hopefully our city will get behind that.
That is a great suggestion. Thank you, Councilman. Um, next up, uh, Councilman Carwin.
I, I don't think I've ever seen a better idea for a city function, uh, at least come across this day as maybe anywhere. So, uh. Uh, Councilor Dynas, I commend you for bringing this to our attention. I think it's a, a very overlooked period in, in history that. Some right needs to be done and I, I thank you for bringing that and thank you for your service as well. Um, as far as the logistics of things, I, I don't know, maybe this is, is obvious to everybody, but. I know a lot of the folks who would be attending this are older. And I think having it outdoors is gonna be kind of important if we were gonna try to do it indoors. I think a lot of folks might be nervous about congregating indoors. Um, I think that would create some logistical problems, just the mix of folks who might be. Um, nervous about the folks. I know we're, we're here and separated and things like that, but I would, I would say, we give us an opportunity to have a larger group. Um, and people will feel more comfortable and safe. So that's, but that's about the only thing that I would, I would add to this, you know, I know. I know several, I know my, my father-in-law has a banner right out in front of, uh, Donut Star. One of my favorite places. So every time I go to Donut Star, I get to see his banner from service there and he lives in Sun City. So. Um, I'm all for it and my one input for the event would be that we, we hold it outdoors.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sobek.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Mariana, for bringing this and, uh, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Dynas for your service. Um, yeah, I did a little reading on this. I looked it up because I wanted to learn a little bit more about it. Um, it says it's a curmative state holiday. And that it allows for appropriate observance by the public. So I was thinking it would be nice that the public was invited and all public schools. In tribute to the service and sacrifice of our Vietnam, uh, veterans. There was also a website and I was wondering if we've signed up on that website, um, that we're gonna do something like this. It offers. A lot of items and, and freebies, uh, to our veterans, our Vietnam veterans. And by the way, um. You know, the Military Banner Program, we designated Sun City for anyone that was Vietnam. Uh, in World War Two and Korean War vets. That was a request that was by our old, um, Military Committee that we had. It's no longer. But I love this idea. Um. If I, you know, you've talked about the indoor thing. I also thought about the night thing. Because a lot of our seniors don't like to go out at night. And so, um, you know, if we were to do something like this, I see it being maybe in the daytime. And, um, that we would get more of a turnout. From our seniors, but I don't know. That's just my thoughts and my feelings, but, um, I like the idea. I'm glad you brought it forward and I look forward to us, um. I don't know, doing it. Maybe do it once, but do it maybe every so many years, um, that we don't forget.
All right. Thank you, uh, Councilman Leesmire.
I would, I would echo their, their sentiments, Dean. Uh, you know, thank you for a very heartfelt, um, you know, comment about this. This is a great idea. Like the others, I think that. We, we have an opportunity to do it really good. Um, I, I would hate to. Not do it good enough by trying to cram it into a small space. So I think we can find a way to, if we could find a way to make it big and, and make it, make it great. I think that's, that's what it deserves. So again, thank you and, and thank you for bringing this up.
Mayor Pro Tem Dynas.
Yeah, um, I guess for the staff, you have, you, you taught, you said that the VFW supports this ceremony. You've talked with them. I think what's important is to reach out to some of these veterans organizations and see what the Vietnam veterans. Would like is that it, we're doing it for them. So it's, you know, it could be meaningful for us, but that doesn't count, be quite frankly. Um, it, it matters to them. So if they have, you know, something that they have input or would make. That special to them, I think we need to be very, uh, sensitive to that. Um, you tell us certificates of participation. I like to see something like a challenge coin type of thing. Um, to hand out to those. It's so they can, they know that, you know, just more than. We all got a piece of paper when we got out of the army or, or whatever service, but here's a, you know, challenge coin, something that they can have and, and, and see and hold and stuff, I think would be. Pretty fun idea. Um. So I, 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 I liked the idea of a keynote speaker, uh, someone that, uh, that can relate to that, that those veterans. Elected officials, we all show up to that, but you know, whatever are, are ones that we can get there would be great, but something. Uh, that I, I guess I just want to stress that it's, uh, we need to do a lot of outreach to, you know, hopefully we'll work closely with the VFW there. So. I think that the perfect source to, to talk with and see what can, uh, be done to make sure that it, it's done very, very well. Uh, and, um, and is very meaningful for the veterans.
I think we have a keynote speaker right here.
Yeah. Mayor Pro Tem, uh, if you were to wager a guess, how many do you think would attend that would be honored that day?
You know, as, I know we. Menifee has a large group. I mean, i- if you look at it, you know, less than 1% of Americans serve in the military. And, you know, we have a large contingency of, I mean, it's maybe 1%, maybe around that much. It's, uh, residents might be veterans, but that's a lot for, uh, considering how many people actually serve and. Um, so, uh, I'd hope a lot. I, I think. Um, those that are able to, if we make it as convenient as possible, as, as Councilmember Sobek was talking about. I would hope, uh, a large number will show up just to, and with their families, just to, uh. To enjoy the day and, and be given the honor they deserve.
Ms. Mitchell or Mr. Nix, if we were to create this, uh, what's the coin called? Challenge coin. And we needed to do, and that's the reason why I was asking for a number, a thousand of them or however many we anticipate would attend. Is that something we can do before March 30th? And what would the dollar figure on something like that be?
Um, you know, I, I want to say we recently just did challenge coins, uh, for the Veterans Day event. And I believe we did about a hundred of them and it was approximately around $300. So definitely. Something that we can do for, for this event in particular for our Vietnam veterans.
Okay, so it'll be covered in our budget.
Also, if, you know, if you make more, there's some that are just not able to come because of physical limitations or something, but, uh. You know, the VFW would have some of those ideas as well, other, uh, veteran organizations that, you know, we can. Deliver it to them one way or the other so that they'll have it as well if they can't make the, the, the ceremony.
You know, um, when I made mention tonight that I, um, went and saw that World War Two veteran for his 98th birthday. Um, I, I asked for a couple of challenge coins from the, and that's what I gave him with a certificate was the challenge coin. It had Navy on it, Marines, all of them. But I now like to carry one with me when I'm going around the city. That I could, when I run into somebody and, and I have a good conversation and they're, uh, a veteran. I, you know, I like to give it out. And so I have a couple. So I think it's a good thing. Um, it's. They really like it. People really like, I mean, the challenge coin that we have right now is just really beautiful. Has all the military on one side, but a special one for Vietnam would be really nice.
All right. Sounds like we have direction. Anything else on this item? All right. Good. Thank you, guys. We appreciate you helping us with this.
Thank you.
And, and thank you for the great suggestion, Mayor Pro Tem. All right, uh, council members, we're moving along. Let's go to item 13. Mr. City Attorney, do we have anything to report?
No, Mayor.
And Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Announcement that we are gearing up for mid-year budget and, and we're hoping that we can bring the mid-year budget. Along with the strategic plan to you on, on February, pardon, March, uh, second, uh, the first meeting in March. And we are trying to schedule, uh, a workshop to discuss the, uh, strategic plan here in the next. A couple of weeks. So we can, by the time we hear the major budget and then we begin the budget. Discussion for the following year, you are well versed with the, the list of things that we need to achieve for next year. So. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Um. The council members, we're now on item 15. This is a future gender request from council members. Do we have anything we'd like to add to the list?
Were we gonna go over the list?
Would you like to do that now?
I, I thought, was that something we were gonna do tonight or is that next meeting?
Mr. City Manager, are you prepared or?
If you're, if you want to go over it, I, I'll be happy to share some of, um, some details with you.
That would be great.
So, um, I can start with the hunting regulations. I think we are working with our police department and we have. A draft of a staff report and some proposals that we're gonna bring to you at the next city council meeting. Uh, you heard tonight from our, uh, fire chief, uh, regarding an element of the fire department, which is the. Cooperative agreement with Canyon Lake. If you would like something more robust, we can bring it to you or if that's satisfied, uh, that item, we can take this off the list.
Tangled. Thank you. Take it off.
Thank you. Uh, the bus, uh, route feasibility study. We indicated that the RCTC, uh, was funding a pilot project in Hemet and we just learned, uh, a couple of weeks ago that the RCTC. Uh, actually also funded another pilot project here in Menifee. So we hope. To learn more about that pilot project in the next two months and then we'll be bringing a, a staff, I, a staff report to the council on those findings. Um. I think the pet licensing fee and the animal control, we did hear a report and I think Councilman Din Dinos. Mayor Pro Tem Dinis is part of the collaborative group. Do you wish for us to continue with this or?
I think at this time it could be taken off and then revisited in the future if necessary.
Okay, thank you. Um, the, the next two are somewhat related. The regional transportation plan, plan update and the development east of our city. We've been in, in discussions with our community development director and also with. RCTC was on the phone with Ann Mayer and we're trying to get WRCO to be here at the city council meeting to, for them to report on their efforts. And I think, uh, we are planning on bringing a, them to come in, in March. And then also our community development department is working on getting a list of all of those projects that are happening in Winchester. That may have an impact on, on our traffic in our city. And then, um, the, the. Community services is, is working on bringing back, uh, a, an item to talk about the academy, the. Citizens Academy. And I think we're talking about the second meeting in March. And also the city holiday tree lighting event. I did have a discussion with our community services director to make sure that we talk about that before we start talking about the budget because if the council desires to have a more robust. Uh, program that we need to make sure that we, uh, budget for that. So that's kind of the update.
All right. And, uh, Councilmember Sobek is in the queue.
Yeah. So I do have one item. Thank you for that. And looks like the staff has been busy. So looking forward to those items. Um, I was just wondering if we, as we're getting into this fiscal year, this part of the fiscal year. That we might get a timeline update on the Holland Road Overpass.
We can do that. Yes.
All right. So I'll, I'll.
Hold second.
Second, yeah, Bob.
Thank you.
Anything else, council members? I, I do have one that I'd like to throw out there. Um, I think council members, you remember. A couple of years ago, and I think John and the Knicks might be listening, um, that we created a Menifee Day at the fairgrounds and it turned out to be a great event and. Our residents discovered the fairgrounds because of that event and their attendance went up. And so it was kind of a symbiotic thing. I want to introduce an idea that's similar to that and it has to do with the drop zone that we have. That the county operates, uh, through a vendor, but it's, uh, a great amenity and we have so many new residents that are here and I don't know that they even know that that's there. And if you look at some of these surveys and some of the things that we've been doing, people keep saying we need these aquatic centers in Menifee. We need. And I just wonder if people even know about it. So, uh, I spoke with Scott Bangle. Uh, he's one of our parks commissioners and he's a former general manager for. Uh, county regional parks. And he said, I threw the idea about having a Menifee Day. Or a Menifee Week maybe where it's a, uh, discount for our residents at the drop zone. He said, man, that's a, I don't know why we didn't think of doing that earlier. So. Um, yeah. So if we can, I don't even know if we even need to put it on the agenda to talk about. I mean, if you guys are okay with it. Um, I asked him to bring it up at tomorrow night's parks meeting and kind of introduce the idea. So. Maybe we don't need to put it on the agenda. I think it's gonna get some legs, but, um, those are the kind of easy things we can do. It doesn't. Cost us anything. It's just an agreement with the county.
Yeah, let's have our parks commissioners come up with some creative things. Senior Day, right? Senior Day, right? At the drop zone.
Yeah. I could even go with that. All right. So anything else? All right. So with that, thank you, everybody. We will adjourn now. I do know Councilmember Sobek mentioned she'd like to do a request to adjourn it in a young man's honor and we have this.
So I'd just like to close our Menifee City Council meeting tonight. And we'd like to, as a city council, extend our deepest condolences to the family and friends of Christian CJ Libert Delphos Jr. He has a young man that has battled cancer for two and a half years and recently this last few days sometime received his wings. And he's also an honorary police officer in our fire depart, in our police department. And he is a nephew of one of our staffs, Michelle, I mean, Cheryl Kitzero. So I'd like to just close this meeting in his honor tonight.
All right, so we will adjourn in his memory and honor.